It is, uh, apologize for us being late. Sorry, Your Honor.
We're about to open the Dayton Conservation Commission public meeting. It's Thursday, September 19, 2024. We're opening a little bit late due to technical problems at Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue. This meeting is video and audio recorded for cable broadcast and internet posting on www.dighton-mass.gov and YouTube. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation from Cal Rabello Bell Pharma Estates seeking confirmation of wetland resources at Zero Milk Street, map 17 lots 109, 135, and 208, file number 17-489.
This is a continuance of the getting the EnRad approved.
Yeah, so we had Phase C completed, is it, review? Weston and Sampson, Phase...
Yeah, the final, yeah.
Yeah, and then Megan and I went out with wetland scientists and did another walkthrough. So we're happy now with the wetlands that are shown on here. The only thing I just noticed this afternoon was there's still not a 50-foot, no build zone added. There's a 25 and the 100, but not the 50, so...
That can be added on the map, though, since you are aware of that.
Yeah.
That shouldn't be a problem to add it on the map.
Yeah, if they just edit it and, you know, send it to me next week, then I'll issue the ORAD. If you guys... The only thing is, you know, the other two things actually is the two vernal pools. We talked about that in the field. Typically, we've been requiring everybody to certify the vernal pools, so with the ORAD. But you're going to be coming back with a notice of intent, correct?
Notice of intent, yeah, for the beginning process of the, you know, development and stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what's your...
I think you could put it as a condition for the notice of intent. You could certify them.
Okay.
And then maybe just a condition, the ORAD, if you issue it tonight, saying the plan will be updated with the 50-foot.
Yeah.
No bills, it's submitted.
Yeah, oh, you mean submit the ORAD based on this one, or I could wait, you know? We could vote to submit, I mean, issue the ORAD.
To approve it, and what map is that? That's going to be a date...
An EnRad plan, but we're going to need a new date.
Okay, but we will approve the EnRad as adjusted?
Yeah, with the modification.
Yeah.
There's no literature in the document that's going to be changed, so the document's good. It's just a plan notation, right?
Yeah. Well, it's just the 50-foot needs to be added on each of these. Yeah, I'm comfortable with it now.
Okay, so then what I'm looking for then is a motion to accept the EnRad with the modifications as defined by Agent and Weston and Sampson. So, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Oh, in favor?
Thank you. So just have them email them and then have them let me, you know, send it over?
Is it 50-foot setback?
50-foot, no build.
No build around the vernal pools?
Everything, around everything.
Okay.
There's a 50-foot, no build. All the wetlands have them.
All the wetlands?
Yeah.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is from Grasshopper Energy on Brook Street. That has been tabled to a date uncertain, and at that time, abudders would need to get re-notify. Is there a motion to continue?
Is that one continued to a date uncertain, or required to?
I don't, I'm not certain if we need to continue it every meeting or just leave it as to a date uncertain. To a date uncertain, okay. So we'll just leave it as is, and then we'll come back to it next month. Review, discuss, act on a continued hearing. It's abbreviated notice of area resource delineation. The applicant is David E. Butler seeking confirmation of wetlands at 833 William Street, map 8 lot 20, file number 17-499.
They requested a continuance.
Okay, and you have that, okay.
Weston and Sampson has to complete their Phase B.
Motion to continue the EnRad application for 833 William Street.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, review, discuss, act on a continued hearing, abbreviated notice of area delineation, application by Tyler Rhine seeking confirmation of wetlands at Zero Oak Street, map 6 lot 913 and 14A, file number 17-502.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Bergeron with Epsilon Associates here on behalf of the applicant this evening, professional wetland scientist working on the project. Just as a recap, this is our third hearing on this matter. The last hearing, there was just two items requested by the commission to wrap up this application. That was to certify the five vernal pools that are on the property. We have done that with natural heritage. We sent the paperwork to Lisa. And also, we were asked to delineate or locate the center line of the stream, the intermittent stream that was on the property, along with some large glacial erratic features in the wetland system. So we went out and field-located both of those features, added them to the map, and sent the revised plan into Lisa and the commission.
Okay.
So, the plans are just 11 by 17, okay.
We can send a larger set if you want for the file.
All right, that'll be good, but yeah, just...
Are we going to be good to go with this, or...
If you guys just take a look at it.
Okay, well, send one down here and then Abel and I can look, you two can look at that one.
There's lots of different sheets, so...
Okay.
And just for context, I mean, prior to this last meeting, we had field-reviewed the wetlands in the field with Weston and Sampson. There were no changes to our flags, so essentially the wetland boundaries were agreed upon previously. The plan that you're looking at now, you'll see the wetland system... Number on sheet nine and six. You actually have to turn to the detail sheet to see the stream and the glacial erratics in that system. Because if you turn to sheet six and nine, you'll see that we added those features at a better scale. I think it's wetland system two.
That's right here.
Yes, you open up the sheet.
That's sheet seven. Now, we are now the abudders to this property, correct?
Yeah.
Is it not showing up on the PDF that I sent you? Had it? Did we print the wrong set?
I don't know.
Actually, I like this map here because it's showing the whole thing and all the, I don't know, the vernal...
I think my admin printed out the wrong set.
Or five, five, and we, okay, here's the ball field.
See, the cover only references the vernal pool, so I don't know, did you guys add the stream?
We did. So the PDF, the PDF document that I sent you had it. When I asked our admin to send, to print the hard copies out, she must have grabbed the old plan set.
Yeah, the old plan set dated 5/23/24, that's the best one. So, yeah, I don't plot them here.
No, I know the electronic version we have, I apologize. I guess I... I thought I was going to be all set to go. I didn't print the set out and bring it with me on the board, so...
Let me see if I have it in my email.
Thank you.
The email that you forwarded me did show...
Yeah, you did say that.
Lisa, if you're able to find it, then we should be good.
Sorry, if I can approach the commission, we do have a...
Can you find a date?
The PDF that we sent, you'll see it does show the stream channel there in wetland system two. And there's some glacial erratics in there as well, see the circles? I apologize for the oversight on printing the old set. So, this is the PDF that we sent, for the record, and I'll print out a larger scale. And so this is this wetland system here.
This is what my email's doing, I...
The stream comes from offsite, flows through this system into the transmission line right away. So you can see there's a stream system there, and those are the glacial erratics that we located.
Okay, all right, so now Oak Street is here?
Oak Street's right down by 10.
Well, now this would be the high school.
Kind of over, right there, she...
Oh, okay, all right, makes a turn here, okay, all right, then it goes that way.
Let me do it on here.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
This is the one that you sent me, and we sent this to a neighbor who was requesting it. But you can see the street is marked there, the glacial erratics are also marked.
Can I just look at the plan?
Well, I see the ball fields and whatnot here, yeah. No, I'm just...
8/29?
Yeah.
So you guys are going to send that again?
Yes.
So, um...
You should not be able to go through this.
Plan dated 8/29 would be the final.
I apologize for sending the wrong plan.
What is it? Yeah, because I sent it to Megan. Yeah.
I'll forward it to you against what's at the top of here.
After the chaos of man? Thanks.
I don't have to.
Just to go around the corner. Some gravel across the road right there.
Thank you, though.
And then they go on Maple Street on the other end, just before you run over the river. Some gravel there, that whole section of road was shot off. It was all dirt, scot passes. You know where the telephone tower is?
I bet I'm going to find it right now.
That was the only place wooded, it's right over here, at the orchard.
Lisa, are we all set to make a decision on this?
I would say so.
Okay. Are there any work that they have to do to sit forward to you, the new maps that you showed us on your phone? Okay, you're going to, um... All right, so what we're going to want is an approval of the EnRad with the applicant sending the newest version to us.
Well, we do have it, but we need a paper copy.
Okay, all right, we do have it, okay.
A D-size print, correct, large-scale?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
But yeah, I did get it.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the EnRad on?
Motion to accept the EnRad subject to receipt of hard copy by the conservation agent of the updated EnRad dated 8/24.
All second.
All in favor?
8/24? 8/29, thank you. 8/29.
8/29, okay, we'll change that.
Do you want an updated motion?
Sure you can.
Motion to accept the EnRad subject to receipt by the conservation agent of the updated EnRad dated 8/29.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks for your flexibility on that. Sorry for the oversight. Appreciate it.
Okay, next on the agenda is a notice of intent from Lee Castanetti. Hunter's Hill, to construct a community center with associated mealboxes, parking pool, sports court, along with associated clearing and grading at Hunter's Hill, map 21 lot 66A, 7A, 1223, 37-46, and map 22 lot 56-02, map 23 lot 8. File number 17-508. Okay, all right, we have a member of the commission who is going to disqualify himself for being involved at some previous time with this project. Okay, he will not be speaking on this.
Yeah, Abel, you just want to step down over here. Jack, do you want one down there?
No, I can look at that. I got a smaller one here right in the oval.
I can see fine, I think. This is the same thing, I believe. I got my glasses on, I can...
Do you want to look at as an abut, as a present?
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. For the record, it's Evan Watson, W Engineering, representing the applicant. Before we get started with that, I brought a prop with me tonight because we have a lot of homes in this Hunter's Hill community, and one of the conditions is that we put out some of the placards. So we're proposing this carcinite post with the placard on it, so...
Yeah, that looks familiar, that...
Yeah, yeah, we paid a dollar, we got one.
Okay, yeah, and that'll, this vinyl will last forever.
Yeah, this is fiberglass.
Fiberglass, okay.
It kind of blends in and be good for the homeowners, but the signs will still be there.
Very good, you could put this on your first location.
Yeah, they're going to be, yep, exactly.
How far down to the ground do those go?
I don't know how the ground is...
Yeah, they probably, well, they put a line there, so maybe you got to that line. So it's about the height of a post and rail fence post is what it would end up being.
Guys, I was just curious, because it looks like it has a little bit of give to it.
It does, yeah. Which is good, too, because if you bump it with your lawnmower or something, it's not going to snap off, you know? So anyways, we opened the hearing at your last meeting, and we went over the plans, and the board voted to have Weston and Sampson take a look at it. And so we've since received a comment letter from them, and we responded to that letter with an updated set of plans. And I will go over the few minor changes that were recommended and that were given. So if you recall, we have the community center here on Clubhouse Drive. They asked us to add infiltration systems to take any roof runoff, which we were happy to do. And that was, oh, and then to identify the catch basins that would require a silt sack. So we added those to the plan. The other thing that they asked us to do is all of this stormwater that gets into this piping goes to Stormwater Basin 4 at the end of Boxwood Lane. And they correctly identified that there was no sediment for bay installed in that by the previous owner. So we committed to installing a for bay dike there. So that will help, only help to improve the quality of the stormwater at the basin. And then the last change they asked us to do is some of the plant names and status was incorrect, so we updated that. And then they asked that we add plantings in the buffer zone area. Lisa and I did a site walk on Tuesday and took a look at that. You know, and I'm not sure what her opinion is on whether or not we need more plants or not, but if the commission wants us to add more plants, you know, that'd be fine if we wanted to have that condition.
Yeah, so it's, the square footage is, for the each area is, so it's 8,200 for the wetland mitigation area and, what is it for the enhancement area?
I think it was like about 9,500.
All right.
It was in the comment letter.
I'm sorry, Lisa, what was the comment number on that?
It's on the second page. It's the last comment on the second page.
Thank you very much.
Oh, so it's 20,000 square feet of buffer zone enhancement. And how many?
So we show 72 plants proposed in the wetland mitigation area and 92 plants in the buffer enhancement area.
I mean, I almost feel like it's like, it's kind of shy some plants. So maybe some more plants, and then I was thinking some invasives were, because there's autumn olive out there. So the last thing we want is for it to get planted and then get taken over by autumn olive.
Oh, do you want this pointed towards the camera?
Yeah, I think they have curtains, if you don't mind. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Yeah, they added a condition for rule of invasive species.
Yeah.
Autumn olive can be handled.
Okay.
Yeah, that, you know, if we satisfied with everything else...
Yeah, I mean, I think we need more plants, though, so there's 70.
That can be put into the order of conditions.
If we wanted to say something like we could increase the number of plants by up to 30% or a percentage, you know? That way, we can budget for that number, and as we're planting, we can do it in the field.
And I like, I like the plant list. Seems like stuff that you already got out there, so I was happy with that. The invasives were the big concern there.
Yeah, there weren't too many. I don't think it needs a whole invasive speech mitigation program, but there's, you know, a few autumn olives that we could pluck out, certainly.
Yeah, and you're going to do two years of monitoring with reports, with photographs? Okay, yeah, sounds good.
I forgot to introduce the rest of our team. We have Brian Madden here from LEC, who would be the wetland specialist overseeing the mitigation area. And then Lee Castagnetti from Long Built Homes is with me as well.
And then, you know, I know you're going down each one of the, why don't you keep going down each one?
Yeah, I can go down. The letter is relatively clean. We've addressed most of the comments. And the only thing that we didn't receive, that the comment was addressed, they had a recommendation for a condition of approval, and we have no problem with any of their recommendations, so...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I would like to go down each one of them, because...
Yeah, I'm going to do that.
Yeah.
Yep, no, I didn't want to go through all the ones where the comment was addressed, just the ones that has an open issue. So the next one was something about test pits. You know, this area here is stripped of topsoil there. So in the spring and wintertime, you can actually see water bubbling up out of the ground and flowing over land. So we didn't find the need to do test pits. However, they recommended that the commission ask the wetland scientist, when he's overseeing things, to ensure that we're in the water table and we're at the right elevation. So we have no issue with that. We agree that a wetland scientist should be present. That's the next one. We specified some stones and branches be placed in the mitigation area to increase habitat, you know, a resting spot for a bird or a frog or something to rest on.
I don't think too much rocks is necessary.
No, no, there's plenty of rocks there, right. And then branches there to, you know, provide shade or like a shelter area for migrating birds and things. So I think the concern is that we just didn't take all of the branches and all the rocks and pile them in there. So that will be done in the direction of the wetland scientist, so we have no problem with that. We also specified to have some leaves put in there to provide a source of natural compost from the surrounding area. And it was just a concern that we didn't use leaves from areas that may have invasives. So the wetland scientist can source the, identify the source of the leaves. We have no problem with that. We were asked to, part of a feature of our mitigation area, it's right next to a vernal pool that we talked about during the overall notice of intent. And we want to enhance that area, because it's just really small. It might be maybe a couple times, maybe the size of Lisa's table, if that. So right next to that, in the mitigation area, we're planning on providing more vernal pool habitat. And part of the monitoring, if that does actually succeed in being vernal pool habitat, we would certify it with natural heritage, so no problem with that. And then on to the stormwater. He recommended that we did test pits. Again, I cited that we added the infiltration area on the side. I have the bottom two foot above the existing grade, so I know it won't be within the water table. But he recommended that we should maybe do a test pit in that area before we start construction. We have no problem with doing that. We can do that. Comment addressed, comment addressed, addressed. And then the last thing was, we have the illicit discharge compliance statement with the original order, and just accept that as our illicit discharge compliance statement, so... So that's it. Everything else, we've addressed their comments. And we would like to ask the board to close the hearing and to vote on whether or not to issue an order of conditions.
Okay, we have no other problem?
Yeah, there was one other question, was the water quality. So because the site's in an ORW, we just wanted to, we can't hold it up for this, but we could condition it that they need to check with DEP to see if a water quality permit is needed.
Yeah, I think probably in this instance, you know, what I generally see most commissions do is just have like a generic statement that the applicant shall comply with all state, federal, and local requirements and permits. And that would behoove them to confirm that.
Yeah, because it's half of the site, a lot of the site's in an ORW, and then some of it isn't, but this portion is.
And that kind of boilerplate language would address that concern?
Yeah, I mean, we would be copied on it when they submit it, so...
Okay.
All right, well, yeah, just to provide a little bit more color to that. So the isolated wetland is a non-federal wetland under existing rules and regulations. While it's within the mapped public water supply watershed for the ORW, which is the Somerset Reservoir, the IVW itself is not an ORW. It's only an ORW, an outstanding resource water, if it's a tributary or connected to a wetland that discharges to the reservoir. So the ORW and the current Army Corps regulations, based on a Supreme Court decision, Sackett decision, are pretty clear that isolated wetlands are non-federal jurisdictional. So there's a disconnect there, but, and we've had recent conversations with DEP Boston to confirm that isolated wetlands do not require a water quality cert if you're altering them. But we can...
That's funny, because we have a Bureau of Resource Protection guidance document from DEP, and it says, "Major fill excavation project versus minor, and a minor project, a cumulative loss of 5,000 square feet of bordering or isolated vegetated wetland" is required.
The caveat there is if the IVW is protected at the federal level... The caveat there is if the IVW is protected at the federal level, which those rules and regulations have changed since that document has been issued, it's.
Well, this was July twenty-fourth.
Okay.
This was two months ago. I don't know.
You can have isolated wetlands sometimes that are jurisdictional, but in this instance, it's, we're not above the five thousand square feet threshold.
I guess.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So if we're, if we're asking the applicant to check with DEP regarding this wetland.
That's what I was.
They concur with the applicant, you know, they can point the applicant. So it would be a question.
That's what I.
We're just asking them to check for.
Yep.
And then you would follow the paperwork to us as, as to their reply?
Yep, we can do that.
Okay, sounds, sounds.
Perfect.
Okay. Looking for a motion to close the hearing and issue an order of conditions for Hunter's Hill.
There's separate motions? One to close the hearing, one to.
And to issue, no, that, I'm doing it together, to, to close the hearing and issue an order of conditions.
And we need to issue orders under each, the local and the, so we'll have two sets.
Okay. Well, well, if I just say order of conditions, it would.
You need two motions.
Okay, all right, then we'll do.
So now you need three.
Okay, Lisa would like to see three, one to close the hearing.
Sounds great. I'd like to propose a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to propose a motion to approve with conditions under the Wetland Protection Act.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. I would like to propose a motion to approve with conditions under the local bylaw.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roll stuff around. More stuff. What, you don't want to stay with it?
I thank you.
Thank you.
Bye now. Okay, next on the agenda is a notice of intent from Peter Koffer, seven thirty-seven Tremont Street, Lot, Map Nine, Lot Forty-One, to construct a septic system repair with associate grading and disturbance within a hundred-foot buffer zone of the wetlands. A continuance was requested by S F G.
Motion to continue until ten seventeen twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, Lisa, this is the one for, to relocate the original position away from the, further away.
Oh, they're exploring. They're doing some test pits in the back.
Okay, that's, I just, okay. Look, review, discuss act for a certificate of compliance request from B W C Greenbrook LLC located nine oh three Tremont Street and two twenty-four Middle Street.
Six twenty-four.
Six twenty-four, S E file number seventeen dash four thirty-two.
So we have not gotten anything from Weston and Sampson yet because this was on hold due to them contacting the State Ethics Board. And since then, they've gotten, they filed the necessary paperwork, so.
So it's going to be continued?
Yeah, I think they'll probably be working on it over the next, course of the next month. Yeah.
Okay, a motion to, well, it's not a hearing, it's a to continue their request.
Right.
Okay, is there a motion to hear their request for a certificate of compliance on our October meeting? And what date is that, Lisa?
October seventeenth.
Okay, is there a motion to view their, the request for a certificate of compliance on our October seventeenth meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you guys may be familiar with this one. I don't know how it works for Abel. I think he can vote on this one, but based on he wasn't here for the beginning of the project, maybe it's, I don't know if it matters if he votes or not.
How many public hearings happened?
Well, well, so we already issued the order and they're closing it out now. So I think you guys were all here when we issued the order. I'm just not sure that because he wasn't here when we issued the order, if he can, how many hearings?
Under the Mullins Rule, you can miss one hearing.
Well, this is not a hearing. This is just a request to close.
I'm not, I'm not positive.
Yeah, so I mean, you can vote on it, but your vote might not count. That's all I'm saying. All right, well anyways, so this is for two six five one Pleasant Street for Aaron Raposa. You may recall, they had an order issued to them about a year ago on October twenty-sixth for a new garage. And along with the new garage, we had them move a few sheds and leave a wetland that they had been previously cutting to grow in. This is the, the bird farm. So we have a request here to close out. I did conduct a site visit with Mr. Mariano and I'm comfortable with the garage. Comfortable where they put the permanent placards. And they even planted a few trees for mitigation, some red maples. But I would say at this time, I would hold off on issuing a complete certification because we want to make sure that those red maples grow in. So we could issue a partial and then after the spring next year or even in the fall, they could come back for a full. And I've already told the engineer that that's what I was going to suggest. He's not here.
Okay, all right. I don't see any reason why we can't off, issue a partial certificate and, and do that and then finish it up in the spring, a full certificate of compliance. It's for work already done, not work to be done.
And the site is stabilized, so if you drive by it, there's full vegetation. You really, no, there's not, there's no silt running off. There's no concerns that way.
Okay, is there a motion to, to issue a partial certificate of compliance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I moved the agenda around a little bit. I hope you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, wait a minute, I'm just.
So from what we preview, we, we usually do, you know, we usually do the other business before the enforcement stuff, but I thought maybe we could do it this way. It's up to you guys. I could always move it back for next meeting.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I think we've got some attendees here tonight who might be in regards to this. So I think having earlier is better than having to wait here.
Okay, great. That was my thought too. We did get an email from Mr. De Souza regarding two three seven one County Street. He asked for a continuance. He's out of state.
Okay, wait a minute, we, uh, which one are we on now?
Under enforcement.
Right, but the first one, not the first one?
Yep, two three seven one County Street.
The bottom of page one.
Okay, all right. Okay, so he requested a continuance.
Yeah, he did.
Okay.
Jim, I think Attorney Jack might be looking to.
Yeah, I'm happy to come forward on that. I.
Okay, all right.
I, I did get the same email from, from Mr. De Souza and I've been in contact with him during the week. He actually, until yesterday, planned to be back yesterday and be here for the meeting. As you know, he does a lot of work for the Department of Defense and he is on a project for them and they asked him to, to stay over and continue to work on that project. And that's why he could not be here this evening. I had spoken with him last week. He was on that project expecting to be back yesterday and then this afternoon emailed you and us telling us that he, he was not going to be available.
So he has two.
I don't want to come back either. Hello, Wisconsin. I don't want to come back either.
So he has two very important jobs.
He does. I mean, there's, there's same job for different clients and this one happens to be in Wisconsin or, or wherever they send him.
That's government?
It is, yeah.
Okay, certainly we'd like to see this project move on too.
And, and I know that we were finally in a position, I think, to have an opportunity to talk about it because he did get the plan in the last time and he's had it for at least a few weeks now.
And I sent edits. I did request some edits. So we won't talk about those tonight. We need to make sure he's there, here when we talk about the edits.
Okay, you, you do have a plan though, in hand?
Yeah, and I sent edits, yep.
I think it was sent, what, the day of the prior meeting, something, something like that? The day before?
Oh, yeah, the plan was sent the day of the August meeting and my plan edit request was sent on September fourth. So.
Okay, and I don't know if you want to say anything about the plan now, okay?
Not right now, not with them not here. I'm, I'm just happy that it's looking good. I just want to add some things to it.
Okay.
All right.
All right, very, okay, so we have a motion to continue. They need a motion to continue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then can we skip down and take his next one?
Wait a minute.
Which, which address is that, Lisa?
Eight eighty Hart.
Would you, would you indicate a motion to take eight eighty Hart out of order?
Uh, yes, that's fine. Is it, are you making the motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, eight eighty.
Thank you for that.
Uh, wait, I'm finding it, okay, I got it here. Okay. We have requested a restoration plan by eight thirty. Lisa, that plan has never come in?
August third, the one due August thirty?
I'm talking about Hart Street.
No, we never received.
Okay, so a problem. The plan has not come in. Problem, cattle and structure in wetland. I was by there today. Nothing has been moved. I made notice on that at the previous meeting, that the cattle were wallowing in the mud of the wetlands. I made notice of that. I went by the site yesterday and I see a truck dumping wood chips on the site in the wetlands. Major problems. And I am not happy with it. And I am very ready to ask this commission to stop fining the landowner at three hundred dollars a day for the indiscretions that are taking place, not only previously, but that have continued since the time that we talked.
Okay, I'll be happy to address that.
I don't think you will be happy, but go ahead.
Well, it's my job. With regard to the plan, as you know, Mr. De Souza was also scheduled to be here on that matter. I was not aware until I spoke with Lisa earlier today that he had not submitted the plan. I'm, I know that he has worked on it. I know that he's been out to the property. I did not know what level of his communication was or the fact that he had not submitted the plan. I know that he's aware that it was due and I'm sure that he, despite his other commitments, was, is going to get that done as soon as, as soon as he can. With regard to the, to the cows, what, I understand that the, the animal control officer was out there, did observe, did not, and I, Mr. Whitmore could, could not be here. He's actually ill. Mrs. Whitmore is here. The, my understanding is the animal control officer did go out there, did observe the cows, didn't, other than wishing that they could be in a great, in a larger area, didn't have, wasn't concerned about any other.
They cannot be in wetlands. A new farm, if it was an existing farm for fifty years and they were there, we can't do a darn thing.
Even though it was a farm years ago, it has to be at least consecutive.
Continuously involved. He is, he is speaking right now. You're out of order.
Well, I wanted to respond to the board helping them.
Okay.
I did speak with them and they are in the process of looking into everything. But as far as we're concerned, it's not allowed. And you know, you have to have permits in place. In fact, I think it was two years ago when I spoke with this Whitmore when they originally started cutting the wetland. I explained all that to them. So I'm not really sure where things are at with flagging the wetlands.
Um, I, I know that was also in the process of being done. I don't know where it stands right now. And, you know, as, as you may recall from, from when this first started, the Whitmoors were relying on the wetland maps that they saw. They didn't believe that they were in the wetlands. I understand that the wetlands lines have changed and that's why we're having them flagged. But the area that they were in, according to the maps that they were relying on, didn't show as wetland. So it wasn't that they were intentionally.
Well, so we told them, I told them two years ago, you know, and then notice of violation, okay, year and a half. I noticed a violation went out. And then, you know, it's just, so it was February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, the first letter went out. Writing to them about wetland violation. And so I have photos going back, but.
There are photos, but you never put it in the new map. How come?
And, and I do think that they.
We don't have any map.
You told me right then and there that there was a new map because on our map, it showed no wetlands. And you told me, and my son-in-law and my daughter was standing right there when you hit ask to press and we found a new map.
And I told you.
And you told him that he would not understand that and he would not get it.
No, what I said was you need, I look at. Jim, hold on. She's not here for the event. I look at soils mapping as a wetland scientist. If I gave you the soils map, which I can give you a copy right now if you'd like, you would not understand it. You need a wetland scientist. So this is the soils mapping. You can have it. Thank you. But I thought, I actually thought you want to get flagged and that's what De Souza's office, County looked at.
It is, it is.
Lisa, is this still in water? Is that, is that in the picture?
Yeah, it's, this is, this is what was, this is part of what was filled. So if you look at the front edge of the lot.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a feel for the resource. It looks like that was, that was wet.
Actually, yeah, I can show you on this iPad too. The problem is, you know, when people go and they look online for maps, they can't find a wetland map that's accurate because they need to have a delineation. And that's what I thought Mr. De Souza was going.
No, it is. I'm just saying, originally the Whitmoors, when they located things on their property, stayed away from what, what the wetland map showed. It just turns out that the map was no longer accurate because the map was, was dated and the wetland lines changed.
Yeah, so wetlands do change, but I don't know, you know, fifty years ago what it was, but I'm going to show you the map, you guys, the map I just gave her, so.
Now, I know it has to be continuous. Now, I know it has to be continuous operation, but was this property a commercial farm or a local farm?
Commercial, I don't know.
But it has to be continuous.
Probably ever commercial.
And if it has been left fallow for five years, it goes back to zero.
Right, I was just curious.
Okay.
Yeah, I just asked Mrs. Whitmore, go ahead.
I was told by a woman that has horses right where our cows are, and right near the house, it was a big horse farm, right there.
Um, yeah, was that twenty years ago, or how many years ago was that?
I can't get it exactly, because I don't.
Before you bought it, though?
Thirty?
Yeah. All right, so I just wanted to show you guys the map.
But, excuse me, I'm sorry, when we bought the house, I had been went to the county law, and he asked, and he said, oh, I don't know about which wetlands I have, and we're, and nature and everything said, you don't have any wetlands, because number one is, we've been paying our taxes, the full taxes, all these years, because supposedly we didn't have wetland, and we were supposed to be able to do what we wanted to do. And my, my stuff, you know, I don't should do a document or anything, but if the new map came out and stuff, why didn't the owners get them? I mean, we've been living in this house for thirty, thirty-five years, and she just, a buck comes up and tells us we can't do this? Of course, we're going to be upset.
So this is a soils mapping, this is their house.
If we knew that, we'd have had a break in taxes.
So Whitman is a wetland hydrosoil, so this is the Whitman, and this is a Woodbridge. Woodbridge is on the edge of a wetland normally, so this is their upland, and this is, I think they own this lot. Do you own the lot that the power line is on to, or no?
The lot what?
The power line goes through as well, or no?
That's the whole lot, no, it's a man.
Okay, so you went great here, but anyways, so this is Whitman, you can see the dark signatures.
That's where the wetland was, right up there.
This is an upland, this is a wetland, so, you know, you see the wet? They might have a dry spot.
Have you been to the site?
No, I haven't, but I've seen the, I saw the iPad view at the last meeting.
Yeah, right now, there's a lot of sedges growing, not sedges.
Yes, I haul timber off.
Is a hydrologic soil group, like a CD, so it's like you would never be able to poke in it.
The whole town. And I grew up, I've been here seven, four years.
But there's even a wetland in that, it just.
There's.
The maps are right on.
So where do you find those maps?
On map, map, but you have to know how to interpret them, basically.
I figured they picked up bales of hay.
Wetland scientists use them. I know you did have it filed after the first and fourth. But we've never seen the wetland delineation.
Yeah, I was looking at it from a distance, I can see, so here's the house, the boats, the boats are approximately right here. The cows are approximately right here. The dumping of the wood chips was all through here and here, and of course, where the animals are.
Wood chips are not, or the roads are up and down.
But they're still in wetlands.
You can't fill or alter land with a contract.
There's not wetland, because the wood chips are there.
Maris Lane was an open field too.
And cows can walk in water, you know that, don't you?
But legally, DEP could also, if we wanted to, we could get DEP involved in this as well, which we're trying not to do, but basically, it's in violation of the local bylaw and the state regulations as far as having, you can have livestock peeing and doing their thing in a wetland like that. So.
You cannot start a farm in a wetland, you cannot have an area that has not been used in agriculture, commercial agriculture for five years, reverts to its original state by law. And if that has not been farmed or not been in agriculture, then you start at step one, which means if it's wetland, you can't put the cows in there, you can't put, you can't use it, because it's wetland. And then anything that you want to do in a buffer zone, you must have it regulated.
Perfect, I can move the cows to my backyard, I haven't had it before, and that's okay, right?
I don't know how, looking at that, it appears as though there's, there's wetlands there too, I don't know exactly.
And obviously, that's ultimate we're trying to do, Mr. D'Souza's plan will show a proposal of where the cows would be relocated to.
Well, it's not just that, it's also dumping of the, of the wood chips that, in wetlands, it's dumping, it's cutting in the buffer zone, which is protected until approval is given, and there is a twenty-five foot no-touch zone, there's a building structure in the wetlands, and we have a twenty, a fifty-foot no-build zone, so there's a lot of violations here. By law and by the state.
Right, and that's why ultimately.
I mean, we can get the state involved, and they might rip her apart, I don't know, I don't know what they would do.
Jim, could I just inject a thought?
Sure, you certainly may.
If Mr. D'Souza is able to find an alternative location on the plot that's not in a wetland, even if it's in the buffer zone, that's a conversation that we could have.
Well, yeah, let's say fifty feet out or so.
Right, right, so if they're able to identify a place that's, in an area that needs to be permitted, but not necessarily in a wetland.
But that hasn't been filled, that's the problem now. So, wetlands are based on vegetation, hydrology, and soils. So now, we've had part of the wetland be cut, part of the wetland be filled, now another part being filled for the cows with wood chips, and then what do you do?
There's no wood chips in their pen.
Not in their pen, there is something, there's a, there was a couple of huge containers, was that squashes?
That's what they eat.
Was it pea?
No, I know, I know, I know that, but I'm just saying, I didn't know what it was when I went by. I just, and I assumed it was like old butternut squash or something.
No, we get it right from one of the stores, it's all pots and stuff that they cannot use in the store.
No, I know, Hanaford does that.
Watermelon, those cows get fed very well.
That's not, that's not the issue here, the issue is them being in the wetlands. And the wetlands being used when they should be in a natural state.
So you're telling me my whole land has to be in a natural state?
Well, we don't, we don't know, because I've asked you to get it flagged now for almost two years, and we haven't seen any flagging, but instead, we've seen more and more and more encroachment. That's the problem, that's why you have to keep coming back.
And if I, like I said, I told your attorney that if I, you know, I'm ready to ask for a three hundred dollar a day fine. I won't ask for it today, but I expect that your agent is going to have this flagged out, and it's going to have a plan into us that was supposed to have been in a few weeks ago. Then, then if he cannot do the job, maybe you'll have to hire someone else.
Now, Mr. Chairman, how would this be for a potential roadmap? Would be that if Mr. D'Souza, by our next meeting, is able to provide us with a plan, if we could potentially, you know, get the wetlands flagged, potentially identify a place in a buffer zone elsewhere on the property, that might be something of a conversation we could have.
Well, this is what I'm pushing.
Yeah.
I'm pushing, but I got the carrot out there, but I also have the guillotine, and the guillotine is the three hundred dollar fine.
And then, there could be a restoration component for what's already been done, or where's, you know, places that have already been disturbed, a restoration component could be discussed as.
That's what the plan is all about, that hasn't come in. Am I correct, Lisa, has not come in?
It was due August thirtieth.
So we're talking six weeks out, no, no, I'm sorry, three weeks late. You know, I mean, I know he might have other responsibilities, but then maybe if he's taken the job, have you signed a contract with him?
I'm not sure, my husband misses that.
They have, yeah.
Then maybe it's up to him to find someone else to do the job that he can't do, if he's got another, if he's got other activities.
That might be a conversation between the applicant, between the resident.
Well, that's why I'm just saying, I'm just throwing this out so that, so they can discuss it. I'm not directing them to do anything, I'm throwing it out for discussion between them. But we want action.
Understood.
Positive action.
I understand what you're looking for, and I'll address that with Mr. D'Souza, and we'll have to try to get into a better place when we're here next month.
Okay, all right.
I'm sensitive to somebody who wants to engage in agricultural activity, but we also have to, you know, protect the resources in accordance with what we're flagging, Minister.
No, I think your suggestions are reasonable, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, Mr. D'Souza's able to identify a path forward that we can continue to have a productive discussion, I mean, what I'd like to see happen.
Okay, Lisa, we also, I think we've got our point across.
Yeah, I mean, but can we elaborate that we don't want any more wood chips dumped? I mean, how do we get that point across, and we actually, I would like.
I think three hundred dollars a day is going to get the point across.
I would like to see those removed, even though they're in the backyard, they don't belong there.
No.
Right now, it's our backyard, and there's no water.
Because you're changing the elevation, you cannot fill land within a hundred feet of a wetland.
Oh, my God, they don't even go there with fillers, man. Up the street, they did it to put in houses, and nobody said a thing.
They filed for permits.
Nobody said a thing.
They filed for permits.
Huh? Well, how come you guys didn't stop it? They had a huge, huge, I wouldn't ask.
Well, maybe next month, if we're receipt of, you know, something that looks like it's a way forward, then maybe we can have a more holistic discussion that kind of addresses everything, that might be.
I think that sounds very good, and are you satisfied with the way it could go next week, next month?
Yes.
Okay, could go, hopefully it will go.
October seventeenth.
Okay, thank you. So, do we, so we will continue this action till October seventeenth?
Yeah.
Do you feel, is there a motion required?
I'm looking here, I've got several papers here.
I mean, you guys can continue, but it's not a hearing, you don't have to continue.
Yeah, okay, we'll continue action until October seventeenth meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to go back, I have two agendas here. And I'm reading, and I'm flipping, and one has minutes.
Yeah.
Review minutes and act upon them, and the other one doesn't, but I want to go back to the one that I have, the meeting, the agenda that I have here, and it says.
Well, it was posted as, at the end we do it, the other business, that's what I said, I moved it around when I posted it. We have an old version, here.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, I thought I missed it completely, okay, all right, okay, that's fine.
But I did just realize that there were two follow-on Weston and Sampson contracts that I didn't have you guys vote on before we closed the public hearing.
Okay, all right, so, okay, so I didn't miss that, are you looking at the?
No.
The draft agenda, okay.
Sorry to confuse you.
Let's see.
I think zero Horton Street is back to regularly scheduled.
Yes.
Okay, so our next item then is zero, okay, zero Horton Street. Enforcement audit issued eleven twenty-eight twenty-two, restoration plan being implemented now. Lisa?
Yeah, so that's underway.
Okay.
Jim and I were here, I was there several times, but Jim went with me yesterday, right?
Yes, and that, okay.
I thought they were going to be here tonight, but I guess they weren't.
Well, he didn't have to come, I think he's waiting for the rain so he can throw those seeds in between the stone.
Right.
Yeah, that's going to, that's going to look pretty good when he finally gets finished with it. Okay, fourteen twenty William Street.
All the tar's been removed, so that's great.
Fourteen William, fourteen twenty William Street?
There's no new update on that, we don't have a filing yet.
Okay, ten thirty-three Oak Street?
Yeah, I have an update, I visited the site with Mr. Watson and the owner, Mr. Cook. Do you guys want to see the plan, the restoration plan, or do you, are you guys okay with what I?
No, it's, I've seen you in action.
So we've designated an area to the west of the garage, and then south of the gar, I mean, north of the garage, that's going to be just left as is to restore the twenty-five foot. I had them add, they had, I think, a dozen or so trees and shrubs, they're going to add a little bit more to that list, and if you see any cutting, I gave the owner permission to cut an ash tree that was dead, kind of on the edge of the right of way, but anyways, it looks good to me, and I'm happy with that. Hopefully, you guys would be happy with it, too.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Twenty-four seventy Pleasant Street?
So we do have some email correspondence, the owner, remember, we met him on-site with Dave, and so that was a few months ago, he's had a hard time getting out back to call him back, I guess, they're really busy, so.
I think he's highly motivated to correct this problem.
Yes, he is. So he's going to reach out to some more local engineers, hopefully he can find someone, but he has been emailing me and been responsive.
Okay, very, yes. Seven ten Center Street?
That's Jack.
Yeah, I spoke to him the other day, I finally got ahold of him, and I gave him Lisa's number, he's supposed to call and touch base with her, and see if they can touch base with NH, National Heritage there, make sure everything's up to date.
He hasn't called me yet.
Well, I didn't catch him till, when was it?
Last week or something?
No, it was this week, I don't know, Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
Ten seventy Smith Street?
Yeah, so the wetlands have been flagged out there, and I visited the site, I requested a site visit with Zenith. They're going to put together a proposal for them, they definitely cleared within the one hundred foot. It's questionable if they cleared within the twenty-five foot, but they want to regrade the whole yard. So, they definitely have to file a notice of intent. Improvements, they're making improvements, so it's great, because, you know, the house was really in rough shape when they bought it. But I'm happy that they're moving forward, and they're going to do the right thing, that they understand they might have to restore some. They have a problem area in the front yard along Smith Street where there's a catch basin, so we might need to loop Mr. Ferrian as well, there's a culvert under the road as well, so. But yeah, things are progressing with that one.
Okay, Sandwich Lane and Boxwood Lane?
No new update on that. Can we take correspondence out of order, we have people here for that.
Well, I think that we're, aren't we really there, okay, okay, we can do, yes, we can do that. Is there a motion to take correspondence out of order?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, email from Wright Pierce on behalf of the Town of Somerset's Raw Water Pump Station. Ah, okay.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I'm glad we're here, hopefully. Well, I'm, I'm glad we're here, hopefully on a, on a friendly, nice-
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we're trying to protect your water supply, is-
I see that, I see that. It's very encouraging. Thank you. So, I'm Chris Wickman with the town of Somerset Water Department.
I'm waving at Chris.
Wickman. W I C K M A N.
Okay.
Can I take the podium, please? Yes, sir.
And I'm Tara Worahan. I'm with Wright Pierce, working on the project.
Wright Pierce is our contract engineer for both the projects that we're doing with-
Okay. Right. What do we have? Segregated River that you're taking from, and you're taking-
Yeah, so you guys are probably aware, right, that town of Somerset withdraws from the segregated river on a seasonal basis.
Well, we are very aware.
Uh, so we have a very substantial structure up there off of Brook Street, the pump station up there that we run seasonally. Typically, you know, when the stream flows are adequate, December through May, it seems to be is-
You just use that to fill up your reservoir?
Yes.
Okay, you don't pump directly to a treatment station?
No, that, so that, that replenishes the majority of the water that is in the Somerset reservoir, so the natural water should about that.
Before you get on to your topic, have you ever been aware of the activity along the segregated north of Dayton?
Not particularly, no.
Maybe you want to pay attention to that as time goes on?
Yeah, because they're sucking the brook's dry at my place. Never goes dry unless it's in a drought, so.
And while we've only-
They're sucking plenty of water, Jim.
We've been four weeks without rain, four.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, Jim. I've lived next to that brook for over seventy years, and up until about-
You're an old guy.
Yeah, thank you. Up until maybe eight, ten, eleven years ago, it used to go down, but it never went dry. In the last four or five years, you can walk across it with sandals, pretty much late spring, all the way till fall.
Okay, now, I'm talking about building activity in the community to our north.
Really? Okay.
We've had a go with it already.
We'll have to, have to look into that.
How far do you like people to stay away from the river and building?
My personal choice? As far as possible, as far as possible, for sure.
Yeah, how is twenty, thirty feet sound?
Uh, not desirable, not desirable.
Well, I'm just, I'm throwing that out. You can go, you can go and start, and drive the route.
Start on forty-four up by the golf course. Not that they got anything to do with it. The golf course doesn't. You'll see, you'll see what he's talking about.
Okay. We'll have to put that on the list, for sure. Thank you.
Okay, let's get on to your business with us, and we just gave you a bit of activity, a bit of a-
Gave you some work.
Yes, yes.
Um, so at the, at the pump station, there's, there's a wet well portion and then a pump portion. Um, so the wet well portion needs to undergo a maintenance, which is an inspection of the wet well itself. And so these photos, just because you can't see it from the road, and I don't know if you've been down there, but it helps give you a visual of the pump station.
I think I walked in there once a long time ago, but you have signs all over the place.
Yeah, so this is, this is on the north side of Brook Street. We also have the well, right, that's on the south side of the street.
South side.
So, they each are, I think there are over a hundred acres of land on either side of the street there that-
And, and we actually control a little bit of land on the, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna call it the west side.
I believe so, yes. Yeah, I believe there is a portion.
And was there an old dam there at one time?
Yes, yes, there was. I think that was for maybe one of the local factories here in Dayton, or whatever it may be.
I don't know. I should, I should head there now while, while it's dry and-
Yeah.
And maybe-
If you guys ever, if you ever guys want to see it.
It's tearing dukes not coming back.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I, I get sidetracked too easy.
It's your opportunity to ask Chris questions, so. Um, so the wet well's on the west side or on the rear of the pump station, so you can't see the wet well in the photos. However, on the second page, you're standing on the wet well looking out at the river. And then the photo on the bottom of the second page, you're actually looking down, and you can just barely make out the bar screens that are on the openings into the wet well. So, there's three of these openings on the exterior, so the river feeds directly.
So, the wet well is basically a giant tank in the basement of the building that is directly connected to the segregated river. And then we pump onto that tank to the reservoir.
Um, and this bar screen, it's about two inches apart between the bars, so there could be objects, branches of two inches in diameter that make its way into the wet well, along with sediment and leaf debris. And so, as part of the inspection, we really need to have a good, clear visual of the bottom of the tank, just to see the integrity of the concrete. So, we're expecting to, that we're gonna encounter about a foot of what I'll call mucky material at the bottom. And we are hiring a subcontractor that does this work. If you're interested in the name, they're now called Aquius. They were underwater solu, underwater solutions, so they're very familiar with this type of work. We are expecting that we'll be using silt sacks, and also we'll be laying out straw wattles along. There's a grass line and a fence line. It's not a great visual in this photo, but it's over here on the west side of the sheet. There's a fence that runs along the segregated. So, the third page shows approximately where we'll be installing a silt bag and the straw wattles. So, we'd expect that the silt will, will pump more of the heavy solids that have settled on the bottom, like the silt type of material. And then, because the leaf debris and any sticks could actually puncture the silt bag, we'd expect more of the organic material to be pumped into the straw wattle to be caught. So, we're not directly dumping or discharging any of the sediment back into the river.
Could I ask a few questions?
You certainly may. That's what you're here for.
Uh, what's the vol, what's the volume of water in this wet well?
Uh, the full volume, see, twenty by twenty, ten feet.
Okay, so you're probably what?
Four thousand.
Three, four, fi, three to four thousand gallons. Now, do you have an idea what you have of sediment in this well already?
No, it's very difficult to determine it, and it's, you know, because it's a confined space, and, you know, of course, this structure was constructed in the early sixties when they did the reservoir-
Right.
And all that, and the treat, the original treatment plant there in Somerset, so.
Now, you're gonna, you're gonna pump it, or you're gonna vacuum it?
So, the, right, the strategy is the underwater solutions or the contractor will go down with, you know, divers, because it can't be isolated from the river. Uh, so that bar screen that you see in that photo will stay open to the river. Of course, this is the time of year that we have to do it, because the river flows are essentially nil, and we will be, you know, utilizing this pump station, you know, come December, January, whenever the flows are adequate enough to start back up.
I'm confused, though. I see you have gates here. I see the channels. Are you gonna close these gates?
There, there is no, there is no mechanism to close them.
Orwards to put in there?
No.
So, there's no way of stopping that river from flowing in there?
No.
And you're gonna, so you're gonna pump against the flow of the river? Is that it?
So, essentially, you're pulling, you put the pump in the, in the wet well, right, and you pull that sediment out, right? It's basically fine silt.
Okay, so you're going after the sediment prior to-
Yes, yes, and then they'll do their inspection once that silt is removed to a level-
Once it, once it clears up, you'll, the divers will-
It's the discharge of the silt that is, you know, what our question is, is, you know.
And this, uh-
Far plan is accurate.
Well, that's where I'm going. So, this discharge, uh, you're, you get about four thousand, actually more than that if you're, if you're pumping and it's flowing in, so you probably could have anywhere from five to eight or ten thousand.
Yes.
And you're gonna contain this and-
Well, the water, the water will migrate back to the river, right, through the, because pump discharge into the silt sack.
You're, you're basically just circulating it.
Yes, yes. But the silt will stay contained in those silt sacks, and in the event that one of those silt sacks does fail, you have, we will have the wattles also prior to-
No, are we accepting wattles in lieu of-
So, well, the question is, do you guys want them to file for a notice of intent for this project or not?
Well, it's, it's within their, this is all within your building, right?
Yes, yes, within the property, yeah.
I mean, this is all, so, this is all contained, and the only thing that's gonna come out is gonna be what goes into the wattle. I've got to use a waddled area. I don't know if that's a-
The basin.
The what?
The wet basin.
Dry well.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Now, is this a-
Dewatering.
A cement con, uh-
Yes, the, the structure is a concrete structure, yes.
But you're pumping onto the ground.
We're pumping onto what is, you know, is designed to be a parking area.
The wattles are gonna, they're gonna prevent this erosion, you know?
Yeah, it's a paved, it's a paved area.
Oh, it's a paved area.
Paved area right up to the river's edge.
So, so the mud will be, or the silt that's in there will be contained-
Silt will be contained, yeah, on the sacks.
Between the straw and the fabric.
And then how will you, yeah, so when you're done, you pick that up and-
Yeah, and will dispose of it.
Any idea how fast you're gonna pump this out of there?
Uh, what do they usually use, Tara? A three-inch pump, something along that lines?
They'll use a three-inch pump, and depending on what they encounter, I mean, it could take them two or three days, they're estimating.
Yeah, I think we have a week, a five-day window for this work, or a five-day estimated, whatever it was? I think it's five days.
Would this pump run twenty-four, seventy?
No, no, it would only be during the work, right? So, essentially, we have to remove the silt from the, from the wet well itself, and then they have to go back in to the wet well, you know, with di, you know, it's di, hard hat, hard hat, dive, you know, with the-
It's a hard hat dive?
Yeah, yeah, because it's all heated suits and all, yeah.
They're a very big Dyson.
I, I, I don't hard hat, I triple, I got probably the only triple tanks in civilian life.
Oh.
So, I'm, I'm familiar with this. Interesting.
How deep is the-
The water in the well is, I want to say twelve feet? Is that about right?
Uh, yeah, right now, I think to the top of the, to the top of-
Twenty, the whole tank, like twenty?
Yeah, but we're estimating about like ten, eleven feet at this moment, because the water level's low.
That shouldn't take too long to, to suck up the mud.
Uh, yeah, it shouldn't, hopefully.
Uh, when do you intend for the work to begin?
As soon as possible, right? We're up against a, you know, a scheduling with the contractor. Of course, we're up against, you know, December's right around December, January, when that pump station has to go into service. And of course, Wright Pierce here is under contract to complete the scope of their work by a certain time also. They're doing a very comprehensive study for us for everything from the pump station to-
Yeah, so this is exploratory, and because we're gonna have that exempt within two months.
Right, that's, that's where I was getting with that, is that one of the next items we have on the agenda is bylaw changes, one of which is to carve out an explicit exemption for the maintenance of public utilities that includes water.
Yeah.
So, as far as an OI goes, is, I, I would be-
No, I, I don't, I, it's, it's internal, and it's, what they're gonna pump in the parking lot, they'll just get the sweeper out there and-
Yeah, well, it'll be contained in those silt sacks, and those silt sacks will be disposed of back at the water treatment. We have a spoiled pile.
They're not dumping everything in the parking lot, right?
No, no, no.
No, they're running it through the filter bags.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the water's gonna be there, and yeah, you're gonna have dirty water, but no.
I just, just want to know, so if anyone asks me what's going on, I know, you know, you guys have told me, okay, we're gonna be out there next Wednesday or whatever, right?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll keep you informed of the schedule.
Yeah, so as soon as we can nail down the final schedule, because it's kind of contingent on, you know, this issue here, is, then, then we'll schedule subcontractors and get that done. Certainly keep you, Lisa, if you want to be, see when the activities-
Okay, I, I think you have agreement, at least with three of us already, that, you know, just go ahead and do it, and you're gonna take the precautions that are needed. I get a, I have a question unrelated to this right here. What is the evaporation rate? Because it depends upon the season and the temperature, but of your reservoir.
Uh, again, that's, that's tough because it's so variable, you know what I mean? We have other factors.
Is there a reason why you don't have a, a huge tank rather than having se-
Uh, that reservoir, that reservoir holds about 1.5 billion gallons of water when full. Um, you know, we, we process roughly seven hundred million gallons of raw water a year to produce the five hundred million gallons of finished water, right, because some is used in the process for, for filter cleaning and so on and so forth. So, you know, economy of scale, it's a, just would be practical to, to have that kind of-
Okay.
Stored volume.
And so what evaporates, you could just continue to pump in?
We, yep, yeah, so there is the local watershed, right? So, the local watershed above the reservoir is about one, one square mile, I believe.
And I want you to remember that we're great neighbors.
Yes, we are, yes, we are. Well, I mean, if it's of any benefit, we do service about eighty, we do have eighty-eight connections here in, in Dayton, right? From the town lying north to essentially Brook Street, there are eighty-eight service connections that we service in the town, so the town does have a direct benefit to make sure that we have adequate water supply to service them.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, or do I have a motion?
I live in the Dayton Water District. Should I have done a conflict of interest?
Okay, do we have a motion to just accept their, to accept their presentation and for them to further their project?
The only question I have is the straw wattles. Are we good with the straw wattles in this instance? You're not dealing with a big slope here, right?
No, it's flat.
The level flat, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, if there's something else you'd want us to use instead.
Or if you want to come by, you're happy to.
I might, yeah. Straw wattles are fine.
I know you don't have a lot of availability during the week, but if you have a specific time, we can, I certainly make it a point to get up there and give you, get access and not an issue at all.
Okay.
Actually, it'd be good to see it, so you guys have an understanding of-
Yeah.
-what it's all about, and, you know, some of the challenges we're faced with, because it is, it is a pretty substantial structure, you know, and absolutely critical to the-
Okay, so that's your pump station. Your treatment station is on one thirty-eight.
Yes, yeah, so that's the raw water, right? We pump nothing, there's no chemical addition, there's no filtration, there's none, it's raw water, other than the two-inch bar screen, that's it.
So, where is your treatment station?
Right at the bottom, at thirty-two forty-nine County Street. So, right there, right over the town, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, right? And is it, there were a couple little ponds right there, or a pond.
Yeah, so that was originally an ornamental pond, that over the years, you know, has kind of-
Cat and nine tails and everything else filled with it.
Yeah, cat and nine, yeah, has, so we just kind of maintain it the way it is and leave that, you know, that-
Yeah, okay.
Ornamental look to it. We like that circa nineteen, you know, fifty, sixties era. Goes with the building.
Okay, are we all set then? Are we all set then? Uh, okay, how about a motion to accept their presentation and to permit their further to put their project to go on without filing?
Zoom.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Thank you so much, Yama, thank you, Lisa, appreciate it. We'll keep you posted on, uh.
Okay.
When we get this scheduled, hammer down, okay?
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Two.
Um, Lisa, are we going on to the minutes now?
Yeah, well, um, I think so, I mean, I don't know what we wanna do about the simple fact that there were two Weston and Samson proposals. That I should've had you guys vote on that I already signed. Wanna do it at the next, I mean, I.
We've already authorized you accept the proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
We already closed the public hearing, so.
Yeah, you, you were already, previous to us doing that, you already got authorized.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we're, so where else, so we'll go to the minutes. Um, I have the minutes here for, um, uh, July seventeen. Um, they've been out and about, um, is there a motion to, uh, accept the minutes from July seventeen, two thousand twenty-four? Is there a second?
Well, second.
All in favor?
And then I just need Jim to sign now.
Okay, uh, we have the minutes from, um, August fifteen, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Zoom.
Is there? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Lisa, here are the two, uh, uh, signed minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, Dayton bylaw changes.
Yeah, I gave you guys each copies. I had a conversation with Matt, um, and Matt's feeling about all of it is that the bylaw would be stronger than any regulations or policies, so just keep the fees in with the bylaw, and he suggested we do the name change, so. That's why you see it crossed off at the top. There's a bunch more regulations I would like us to add, but we can do that next year, I, I just, I would rather us not keep putting this off if we can, you know?
No, that's fine, so, so we can get the, uh, changes, uh, uh, the, the changes are all in red?
Yeah, so the only questions I had was the two yellow areas, right? And then, um, I did wanna know if you guys thought I should add something in there cuz, um, C con requires this and I think it might help us. People are using GPSs a lot for, you know, field delineation and it doesn't always depict very well or accurately on the plan, as you can imagine. So I didn't know if you guys wanted me to also add something in here that we would need, um, an E N R A or notice of intent specifically to be stamped by a P L S or a P E. And what your thoughts are on that. But, yeah, we can talk about that, too. Yeah, you wanna go through each of them?
That'd be up to the other commissioners, I've read through them already.
Yeah, I have too, I don't know if.
I just had a couple of quick things I wanted to address. Uh, I don't know, do you wanna go through them one by one, or do you go over there and just jump in at the things that I?
No, you go ahead because I've gone through them as well.
So on the back, the second page on the back, uh, where it says, or it's duly authorized agent. Uh, it's in the back of the first page, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, this is a scribbler's error, it's a D U L I for, for duly authorized.
Oh.
Um, the other one is.
Wait a minute, where is that now?
Uh, it's duly authorized agent, that's just.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Um, the next one was on the same page, unless the commission decides at a public hearing that other action is necessary. The reason that I say that is because this is, the commission shall return any unused portion of the consultant fee to the applicant upon the completion of the project along with any accrued interest unless the commission decides at a public meeting that other action is necessary. Uh, we collect these funds and open these accounts under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three G, which states explicitly, any excess amount in the account attributable to a specific project, including any accrued interest at the completion of said project shall be returned to the applicant. Uh, where this says completion of the project in the bylaw, I think that we lose the ability to, to maintain those funds to do anything else because there's a specific operative word is completion there, and so I would recommend that we, uh, that we strike.
The red area, the red area?
Yeah, unless the commission decides at a public meeting that other action is necessary, um.
Strike it.
Yeah, I would say so, cuz the law that gives us the authority to collect these ones in the first place explicitly says that when the project's completed, they have to be returned.
Okay.
To do anything else with it.
Okay, anyway, so Highway Superintendent, um.
So the yellow portion above, um, we're gonna leave that in there?
Yeah, that's fine with me if you want, because, you know, we, we condition things all the time in the monitoring component.
Yeah, exactly.
And if you, if there's software or something, if we decide we need to do that, it makes sense to have the money to pay for it.
So we're adding in Highway Superintendent on page three as a notification to, um, setbacks. We, I, um, crossed off prior to the effective date of this bylaw, I guess we need a period in there. Um, then the vernal pool, E. Vernal pool and potential vernal pools shall hold special protections and have a migratory quarter or at least one hundred feet to other wetlands or natural environment from the mean annual high water mark that will be left in its natural state, natural and undisturbed state. Think that's good for our purposes, um.
How do you feel about the potential vernal pool component?
Yeah, oh, that's a question.
Cuz I'm just wondering if we could, you know, if we, um, if we're gonna accept somebody's delineation or something like that, we, we often require them to certify potential vernal pools as vernal pools.
True.
So, do you think it would be worth striking that and have it be just vernal pools, that we can address all the P V Ps on a case by case basis and make them be certified if we have good reason to do so?
Yeah, what do you guys think?
Makes sense.
A lot of times if they know they have a vernal pool, they'll just call it a vernal pool anyway and not even call it a potential, but, yeah, let's just take potential vernal pools right off.
Uh, what, wait, what page is that? That's the third one?
Four.
Our fourth page.
Fourth page, back of the second page.
Okay, back of, okay.
Yeah, back of the second page.
Okay, so you wanna strike and potential vernal pools?
Mm-hmm.
And then the only other thing that I noticed, I love everything else, and there's one other thing I wanna talk about at the end, but on the, basically the all red page, the burden of proof. On, under number four, Section C, so number four, Section C, versus the project provides benefits to the public interest as defined by and.
Okay, we're missing something.
Yeah, that, exactly.
Oh, yeah, cuz, so the regulations I borrowed these from were the Eastern ones, and so it referred to their regulations, I mean, their bylaw, so we don't have to refer to our bylaw cuz this is within our bylaw, but, um.
Do we have public interest defined somewhere in here, is that right?
No, see, we, I don't have a lot of the, that's where I was saying, you know, there's a lot of stuff I would still like to add as like, um, descrip definitions, but I don't know that, I mean, that was pages and pages more, so.
Okay, now, when this goes before the, uh, oh, wait, let's go to that, to the previous page. It says unpaid enforcement fines will be attached to personal property, and then you have a question mark, remove this and make it another warrant article.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm gonna see if I can pull up what the M G L is on there.
Unpaid enforcement fines will be attached on personal property, uh, will be atta.
Yeah, so that we may wish to submit as a second war article. The reason for that is that we're able to lean unpaid municipal fines, fees and charges onto the third and fourth quarter of tax bills under M G L's Chapter forty, Section fifty-eight. I'll just read the first paragraph, where it says, any city or town may impose a lien on real property located within the city or town for any local charge or fee that has not been paid by the due date, said lien shall be known as the municipal charges lien, provided that a separate vote at a town meeting or by a town or city council is taken for each type of charge or fee.
So that would have, so if we wanna put a lien on it, we would have to go to a town meeting and put a lien on?
No, ju, so what we would do is, so we do this currently with three types of liens, we do it with Title V betterments, we do it with unpaid sewer liens, and we do it with demolition liens. So those three types of charges got, um, approved at a town meeting.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't know what the language of the warrant articles is, but I think we could probably just approve a boilerplate one tonight to basic, basically, um, accept conservation fines as a leenable municipal charge pursuant to M G L Chapter forty, Section fifty-eight. So it would be like something to that effect, because we just have to have a separate town meeting vote for any type of charge, like you could lean really any unpaid municipal fine fee charge could be added.
Could that be, could that be changed right in here and put down unpaid enforcement by chapter such and such and then put into the, um, um, next, next town meeting? Or would, or would that be just one separate item?
I think that would be a separate war article, like where we're gonna be submitting a war article for amendments to the bylaw.
Okay, so that, that whole thing would be removed and we'd do a separate article?
A separate warrant article.
Okay, all right, so we'll get rid of that, and, and, all right, uh, you have those other articles then about, uh, um, demolition lien, we would just put down conservation lien?
Yeah.
And put their, put the same wording in?
I'll ask the town clerk if she can find us the exact town meeting when those got voted on, and then I'll just copy the language.
Okay, all right, okay, okay, so that would be a, that would not come up shortly, okay.
So then I think we'd just be returning to that, uh, number four, Section C, where this project.
Uh, four C.
To the public interest.
Yes.
Okay, do you have that, Lisa, what that wording should be?
I mean.
It sounds like the Eastern bylaw had like a definition section where they claim the public interest.
I'll pull it up, I'll try to pull it up real quick, okay?
Okay, if you cannot find it, just, uh, delete C and make D C, if you know what I mean. So the project is otherwise, and that becomes C.
What we could do, just as a thought, and I'd like it if it was better defined in a definition section, so if we have to wait till later, that's fine. I would like, if it's possible, to fit this in somewhere, cuz I think that giving us the ability to waive a certain condition if we feel like there's a really good reason to do so, that's something I'd kinda not like to lock us out of having the ability to do.
Yep.
So maybe if we were to rephrase it for now, like the project provides a demonstrable benefit in the public interest, something like that, so the burden of proof is still on them to prove there's a, there's a pressing public interest, and then at a later meeting, maybe we can come in with a definition section and amend that to like, be something more specific, I don't know, what do you, what do you think?
Um, I think you ought to include it.
Yeah, cuz.
Something along that.
I would, I would hate to be, you know, kicking ourselves six months from now.
Will be ruled out.
Right, exactly, if we have a really good reason why we do wanna waive a commission, but we're locked into not being able to.
All right, no, I, I, I hear what you're saying. Okay, so you will get that wording and, and provide it then, Lisa.
Wait, I mean, the Eastern regs, nothing's loading on this iPad right now, but you just said.
I, I just said the project provides a demonstrable benefit in the public interest.
Yeah.
Just for, just for now, it's placeholder language, then it'll.
Okay, all right, the, the project provides, now what'd you call it?
I call it a demonstrable benefit in the public interest.
Okay.
Project provides benefit to the public interest.
If that's under the burden of proof section, so they still have to prove it, they still have to prove that it's, they can demonstrate that it's something that's.
And so it wouldn't be as defined by, so, so that as defined by is removed.
Right, and then maybe someday later, we can come back and say as defined by the definition section of the Dayton bylaw, once we.
All right, okay, okay. And, uh, the public interest is certainly not the parka book of the contract, though.
And then, um, the only other thing that I love, I love all this, and Lisa, I really, you know, you worked very hard on this, I wanna commend all the hours you put into this, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I feel like I still need to do more.
The only thing that I wanted to bring up as a discussion, and this is actually my idea in the first place, I just wanna bring it up, is the after the fact filing fee, I just wanted to kinda take the temperature with everybody else on that, cuz it, cuz it is kinda steep, but we have a lot of people who should file and know that they should file and choose not to, and like we were talking about the cat out of the stick earlier.
Yeah.
We have a lot lower fees for filing and doing things the right way, and then we kinda have what's comparatively a pretty punitive penalty for the after the fact filing. I don't know if you guys are comfortable with the five hundred, or if you'd like to see.
Well, that, that, I, I, I kinda bit my tongue on that, but.
It's pretty steep, I mean.
Okay, abbreviated notice, okay, site inspection, um, okay, now. Additional site inspections, okay, now, here's something, Lisa, all right, let's look at fees.
Oh, yeah.
On the previous page, you have abbreviated notice of resource area delineation one fifty. Notice of intent one fifty includes one site inspection. Now you've got site inspection.
I think.
Yep, good catch.
Adding.
Uh, if we just put additional site inspections, and just, and so that we only, because, uh, uh, and that way, I mean, additional site would be beyond the one.
Yep. Good idea.
Now, okay, here's something, he, here's a thought, if someone like down here on a hot street, you did a site inspection to, for enforcement order, that's not under anything.
Ah.
So do we call that, how, how would that be? Do we say, okay, uh, if someone has an enforcement order.
How do you get them to pay, though? They, they don't even agree that they should comply, so. I need to do the site visit whether they pay or not.
Right, that might be something we could think about and address.
Um.
In another town meeting, maybe.
Okay, so, do, do you wanna put down, wipe out the site inspection, just put additional site inspections? Okay.
That.
All right, and then, uh, on the back side, amended order of conditions, request to extend order of conditions. Okay, request for a certificate of compliance, well, is that a site inspection?
Yeah, I have to do one every time.
Okay.
Should we put includes one site inspection in there as well as part of the fee, so that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, why not?
Uh, so, okay, if we make that fifty dollars, that would be site, include site inspection and com, and, and certificate.
All right.
Okay.
I like that.
Request for certificate of compliance, fifty dollars.
Yep, includes one site inspection.
Includes.
It doesn't necessarily include the certificate cuz you guys have to vote on it.
Includes site inspection.
Mm-hmm.
Do we wanna include that under amended order of conditions as well?
Okay, yeah. Um, includes one site inspection, yeah.
I just wanna try to button this up in a way that people are paying if they're, you know, using excessive site inspections, but if they're paying a fee for something, it's gonna kinda genuinely warrant one, that I kinda feel like the, the fee they pay ought to be included.
Request to extend it, okay, request to extend creation of the original order of. Okay, if they apply.
Well, they should get a site inspection too when they act, request to extend.
Creation of an original order of conditions, creation, wouldn't that be part of the filing fee?
No, it's so if they lost it. So in some cases.
I'm sorry.
In some cases, they say, this order, you know, we never recorded it, and we say, well, you need.
It's like an additional copy of an original order of conditions?
Yeah.
Do we wanna just change the language to let people know that's what that is?
Wait, creation or, wait, what's, what, is that the proper word? Because when you have an order, when you, when you do a filing, you're gonna get an order of conditions.
Mm-hmm, right.
So that should be included in the order of conditions.
Right, so I.
So if we, if we put down, um, additional order of condi, oh, see, uh.
Additional copy?
Additional copies.
Replacement of lost.
Ah, there you go, replacement.
Replacement.
Replacement of an original order of condition, how's that sound?
Replacement, yeah, not creation, yep. This is kind of a hodgepodge between a couple of towns, so you have to.
So if someone throws it away, or they, or they don't record it, that's, that's, that's their problem, um, and I think that, that would, uh, deal with it, uh, replacement, um, and there's no reason why, because you give out, okay, how many, how many orders of conditions do you give out to begin with? You give one to the owner and you give one to the contractor?
Um, no, I give one to the owner, if the contractor comes to me, I usually say you should be able to get it from the owner, and if you need one.
It'll cost you fifty bucks.
Okay, now, well.
But, you know, but, but that, but that is, that is going to reduce your time doing needless things. Let them make their.
Down the line, right, I don't know if.
Right, that's part of our goal here, I think, is that, because it's, as it is now, a lot of people who are not working in resource areas and are not disturbing resource areas are the ones paying Felisa's time to deal with the ones who are working in resource areas and disturbing them, so I like the fee structure being set up so that the people are actually utilizing.
Yeah.
Us are the ones who are, who are kinda funding what Lisa has to do.
And I think it'll encourage them to be ready for their inspection, instead of, you know, them applying for the building permit, and then me saying, hey, I'm gonna put this on hold until you've got your erosion controls in, and I go there and the erosion control's on in, and then I gotta go back cuz the placard's on in, you know, it's like.
And it's gonna be fair, and then what's gonna happen is. And it's going to be fair, and then what's going to happen is, if they don't, just, just tell them. If, uh, we're going to, we're going to tell them right from the beginning that, uh, make sure you review your pace schedule on the, uh, bylaws.
Right.
Because if you don't get things done in a timely manner, and you want inspections, it's going to cost you for additional inspections.
Yeah, well, we'll have to put it right on the, the webpage, you know, refer to these, the new fees schedule and...
Yeah.
And then...
You know, because I don't want this to be all of a sudden, wow, I didn't know that was there. They have to be notified.
Of course.
So that they become efficient and don't just start, uh, uh, jingling your time schedule.
Yeah, so what we can also do is, once it's approved, I think we could send it out to all the engineers that work locally here, you know? So they all have them.
Well, you'd do it electronically.
Yeah, email.
Okay, okay, now, how is this presented at town meeting? We would give them a...
Well, I have to produce a warrant article for Monday. What is the, it can be in Word, how does that work?
So, I believe that you could put it in Word, or you could put it in the body of an email. And we can look online to find examples. I, I can look over the weekend, I can look on Monday morning. Could already have the, the body of it written, and, um...
Yeah, just make those...
Since you are, you know, since you highlighted the, the edits.
Yeah.
Then, what, what we can do is, we propose a warrant article, we'll email it to the interim town administrator, Kapi, Leanne, and Karen. And, um, we'll get the exact language, but it will basically be something to the effect of, shall the town vote to amend the conservation by law in, you know, insert the following language, or something to that effect. We'll just look back at the previous bylaws that have been amended, and look at specifically the way that they did it, and I don't know if we're going to do what it's like to strike the whole thing and replace it with this whole thing, or if we're just going to include the extra language
Okay.
in the parts that we did, and then just use strike throughs to show people what we changed.
Now, do we have to say something that all these fees that we collect become pot of the Dyton Conservation Budget, so, so that they, uh, the police department or any other department doesn't get it? Because, because, uh, that's one of the reasons why we're doing this, is because we're, we're running short with all these lawyer fees, with all these, um, enforcement audits and everything else that we're doing, where, I mean, we, we want, uh, these extra funds. We want to become more efficient.
I am pretty sure, we've got very knowledgeable people in the audience tonight, so we might be able to get some, some other guidance to them. But I'm almost positive that if we wanted to use that money to establish like a revolving fund for conservation expenses, um, all but positive that we need town meeting vote for that as well. So that might actually be a separate warrant, not a third one.
Okay, so, now, this has to all begin, get done by Monday?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think, and, um, again, we, we have a former selectman in the audience tonight, so, um, Mrs. Gulag, if you don't mind if I pick your brain a little bit.
What, what's the question?
So, and warrant articles are due by Monday for a town meeting. Will we have the opportunity, because I know that the selectmen reviewed the warrant after all the articles have been submitted. If we needed to clean up the language of them a little bit, once we have like the body of the article in, will we have an opportunity between now and when the warrant closes, to like make slight modifications to them and things like that, as long as we get our...
Well, the warrant closes Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Does it close Monday? Okay, so the main thing is, by Monday, make sure, I call them placeholders, you get your request in saying what it is, at least explain, for example, um, conservation commission bylaw update, all right, or updates, if that's one article. The second one is to establish a revolving account, what you were talking about. Get the, get your requests in, and then, what I would do is put with it, we will give you the complete information, or, or just ask Karen or Leanne, when do you need everything? The main thing is, we want you to put something in there. I just, I just reminded them that, uh, a week or so back, I said, I'm probably going to have a pilot agreement, so I need a placeholder. I sent him an email today and said, I have, I'm trying to finish one pilot agreement, so I want that on the warrant. If the company gives me what I need, I can finish it. If I don't get what I need, it may make the warrant, but it'll be tabled. Like, at the last meeting, I had two on there.
Yep.
And one of them never got back to me in time, so I said, next time. In the meantime, that one has gone away, they don't want it. So, the one I'm working on is Brook Street. But, but the main thing is, get your, get your request in there as a placeholder.
Yeah.
Okay?
So once we have our placeholders in, we can tweak the language a little bit?
You, yes, yeah.
Okay, so, I think we're really all set with our bylaw, the thing...
I don't know, I'm finding little things.
You're going to schedule...
We'll have, we'll have time then, once we get the place...
Yeah.
You schedule a public hearing for that bylaw.
Right.
Bylaws have to have public hearings.
Yeah, we did.
You had a public hearing?
Oh, well, we've been going through the changes.
A public hearing is the notice in the paper, the public notice, you warn the public, changes are going to be made in a bylaw, the meeting's going to be here at a certain time, or wherever you're going to hold it. Bylaw changes are different from regulations. For example, we have stormwater bylaw and we have regs. When we amend, change, or do anything to that bylaw, which we're in the process of trying to get done, there will be a public hearing. Changes in the regulation would require a public meeting, which means we could discuss it at a board meeting.
We don't have regs, we just have a bylaw.
All right, bylaw requires public hearing. Now, the other thing too is, if there are others, uh, planning boards was doing something last night. If they're going to schedule a public hearing for their bylaws that are, or changes, that are going to be on that upcoming town meeting warrant, maybe you both could do it in the same night, one behind the other one. I mean, but, that bylaws do require that.
But we can still have a public hearing next month.
Yeah, so we could submit it, and we could have a public...
Yeah.
But you've got to advertise it...
How many?
Any public hearing, whatever you're required to do with a public hearing. Um, I haven't done, I haven't done one in literally years.
It's been on our agenda for months.
Doesn't mean anything.
How many times does it have to go in the newspaper?
The public hearing is announced once, to the best of my knowledge, and it has to be so many days ahead of the actual date of the meeting.
Could we do that at a regular meeting?
That's what I'm asking.
You could, you could hold a public hearing before your regular meeting, but make sure you advertise it separately. It's got to be clear to the public.
We might need to...
So who to do like a newspaper ad to say that...
Those legal notice things, that's what I had to do.
Yeah, it's, it's six o'clock on...
Okay.
October 7th.
Yeah, we should do it like soon.
Yeah, if you're holding a public hearing on changes in the, uh, town's conservation bylaw. Uh, like, when I did, I didn't publish the whole bylaw change stuff. Um, it was just that it was going to be held.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so...
So we need to come up with a date, like, we have to agree to a date to do the meeting?
And it sounds like we could do it at our...
For a legal...
It could be at our meeting, right? It doesn't have to be at a selectman meeting?
Well, it has to be so many days ahead of...
You do it, you can, let me, how can I explain this? Okay, let's assume it's time for the tax classification hearing, that we have every fall, after, after the fall town meeting, but before we set the tax rate. So, the Board of Assessors brought a selectman meet. It's a special meeting, it's posted as the, the tax classification hearing, okay? Now, anybody that wants to come can come, usually nobody shows up, except the principals that have to be there. Uh, but anybody can come and listen to the discussion on how we arrive at the split for the tax rates between, you know, residential and commercial, or whatever. That can be followed by a regular selectman's meeting, but you got to make it clear, these are two, one is a public hearing, the other one is a public meeting, all right?
Perfect, okay, so...
Okay.
A public meeting can contain regulation changes, which you said you don't have. That can be part of that, but the hearing thing is, is, is just that, the legal requirements that, it's the, what's the term, warn the people? You know, ahead of time that we're going to have this discussion about...
Yeah.
Whatever, all right, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I would say check with, with Shara too. I don't believe it's changed, but she can tell you the timeline between the time it hits the, uh, is publicly announced, meaning the newspaper. And, uh, because I think our bylaw still says we have to put this in a local newspaper, I don't know who reads it, but... Um, and of course, it would be on websites, but there is a requirement in the bylaw about, uh, publishing in the local paper.
Okay, I've, I've got to figure out the timeline of it with Shara, I guess.
All right.
To make sure that we get, so we'll leave the date up in the year.
Yeah, so, so tonight, we'll get our three placeholders, you know, the bones of our three placeholders approved. And then on Monday, when we submit them, to reserve them, we can also, at the same time, check in with Shara, and, uh, check in with, uh, interim town administrator, Purcell, and just get a, uh, get a feel for what the timeline is for when we have to hold our public hearing.
Okay.
And then we could schedule a public hearing, however many days out that we have to be advertising the paper.
Yeah.
Do it as a separate meeting from our regular meeting, even if it's immediately before, or on the same night, or whatever, as long as we post them separately and do it separately, and, um...
If you're getting your special account set up, keep in mind, every year, you've got, it closes out, and every year, you're going to go back to town meeting to get it, uh, there's a cap on it, so they, you have to like revote that.
Gotcha, keep it revolving.
Um, I'm trying to think, uh, planning board, conservation agent, those are the ones I can think of.
Yeah, Felice I think there's one down.
Libraries got a couple.
Yeah, oh, yeah, copy papers and all that stuff, yeah.
Assistant, uh...
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Administrator, right?
We, uh, what we doing with them?
Oh, yeah, so I think we'll, I think once you...
This paper on the right timeline, that's what we're just talking about. Thank you, Nancy.
Well, the only thing is, there's some, there's some people caught, not of their own accord. And I mean, you know, it depends on when this is going in. If this isn't going in into effect for another year or so, that can stay there. But, if it's going to be in before that, there's a few people that were caught in sticky circumstances, and, you know, it was kind of thrust upon them, they thought they were doing right.
Have they, have they already filed?
Oak Street, Oak Street is one of them.
Have they filed already?
Yeah, well, Oak Street, Oak Street, she just went up there. But, but if he hadn't, and he's just going, doing what he thought he was, I don't think it's up to him to have to pay 500 bucks for somebody.
That's pre, that's, all that is pre, it, it would only be those people filing, or, uh, after the bylaw has, the changes have been approved. You cannot, you cannot go back and, and deal with what didn't exist when people started.
No, because, I mean, like I say...
If we catch somebody that has done something today, and we catch them after the bylaws in effect, well, guess what? That's when we caught them, it's when we catch them.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean, like I say...
Okay, no, it wouldn't affect those people.
There's some problems with some of it, and I don't think, uh, most people...
No, this would not affect those people on Oak Street, or William Street, or, uh, that have already been...
William Street, I don't care about, but...
Okay, Lisa, I gave you the two, uh, signed copies, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Bill, what do you think about the 500? Too, too heavy handed, or?
Uh, I, yeah, I, I think it's, uh...
150?
Or even, no...
Cut it in half.
250?
250.
Why 250, that's, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's something, uh, okay, yeah, I could go for 250. Uh, uh, 500 is a real punishment. Not that, not that they're worth it, not worth it, but...
Well, do you want to change it for commercial, because like, they're different for commercial versus, um, residential, as far as Wetlands Protection Act?
After the fact filing.
So we could, after the fact filing residential, after the fact filing commercial?
Yeah. Or, I mean, we're, we're already in rough shape with commercials, so I don't know if we want to discourage commercial indictments.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Maybe not.
Maybe, maybe 250 for now, leave it there, and if...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Future town meetings give us a reason to change it, and we can...
Leave it at 250.
Now, do we, is there something in there saying that we can change it?
No, we would have to do, uh, another bylaw change.
Okay.
Um, so, guys...
All right.
I did find one more change on here, just like...
So actually, so we're, we're really all set then with the bylaw. Well, the only thing that we're going to, uh, we're going to have two parts of the bylaw going on town meeting. Uh, this paper, and then the one that says funding, uh, we're going to make, um, conservation, uh, what you said for the, um...
Yep, I've got the MGL right here for the motion.
Okay.
So, page 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So, section 9 definitions, we do have some definitions. But the red font here that says shall include, it should say it shall include. So, this is talking about vernal pools.
Oh, yeah, yep, I see.
Wait, wait.
This one that says shall, starts with shall include. This section is talking about, uh, the, the previous paragraph.
Okay, all right.
Vernal pools, and what, what a vernal pool is defined as.
Do you like what it says? That's the other question.
Okay, all right. All right, so, all right, so, so we've got two things that'll go on the warrant at town meeting.
Uh, three. One to lean knees, one for the bylaw, uh, one to lean charges, one for the bylaw, and one to establish a revolving fund.
What was the first one?
Uh, for the bylaw changes. Uh, bylaw changes allow us to lean conservation fines to tax bills, and establish a revolving fund.
Okay, lean bylaw and revolving account. Okay, so, um, do you want to make a motion that we, uh, put, uh, um, okay?
So what we could do is, we could make a warrant article to propose the bylaw changes as discussed tonight.
Yeah.
And then, if Lisa's reviewing them, if any of us are independently reviewing them, and we see anything glaring that we want to change, we would have a little bit of time, once we have that in as a placeholder, if we needed to, you know, if there's anything big enough that we needed to hold a special meeting, to vote to all change it.
Yeah.
Then we could, and if we're ultimately happy with these changes, then we can just let them ride as they are, and then, um...
But do we need, we need placeholders for the three?
Yep.
Yep, and as Nancy, as Nancy said, we don't necessarily have to give all the full specifics of the exact changes for the placeholder, just to say that we need to...
This is the only one that we wouldn't give all the changes to right now.
Right, the other two are pretty similar.
The liens, the, uh, the money becoming ours, the putting the liens on the property is, um, okay. Shall, shall we have a motion to have, uh, liens, uh, to have, to put on the warrant a, a s- a system to collect funds through a lien?
Paul's going to give me the wording.
What?
Paul and I have to work on the wording of that.
Okay.
Yeah, but we'll be able to copy of it. For now, are you ruling entertaining motion?
Yeah, oh, I definitely am for the three.
I'd like to propose a motion to submit to the Board of Selectmen a warrant article to allow conservation fines and fee, uh, conservation fines to become a leanable, uh, leanable charge under chapter 40, section 58.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You got to speak up faster. He's, he's pretty, and David's faster, so you, so when he's here...
Fastest second in the West.
Okay, next one is going to be, uh, to alter our bylaws.
I'd like to propose a motion to submit to the Board of Selectmen a warrant article to propose amendments to the Dyton Conservation by law.
Second, second over here, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, third article, the, of third motion.
Uh, I'd like to propose a motion to submit to the Board of Selectmen a warrant article for the creation of a revolving fund, uh, for the, for use with conservation fees as to be laid out in the, in the Dyton, uh, by law.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, now, that would be, okay, here's something now, that would be, the liens would get, we, uh, this is what has to go into it.
Yeah, can you give me the wording of that lien one again? Allow conservation fines to become a leanable...
Yep, to become a leanable municipal charge. Yep, to become a leanable municipal charge under Master General Law, chapter forty, section fifty-eight.
Okay, but that third item that you just said, we want to, we, the Conservation Commission, want to receive money from the liens and from the fees that we are setting forth. So if they write a, a check to the town of Dayton, we want that money. For the two hundred fifty dollars, for the fifty dollars, for whatever it is, we want to get that money in our account. So it's got to be worded in that third item to get to, so that we collect those monies.
Well, so we already do, all the wetland protection fees go into a fund anyway.
But do conservation fines?
Conservation.
Fines.
Oh, fines.
F-I-N-E-S, yes, that would be the, the money comes in on liens.
Yeah, it would have to go to a different account.
Why, why wouldn't it just, well. Okay, so we want all this money, the fines?
Nancy's got a question.
What?
Well, since we got the tax collector sitting here, not an assessor, I gotta ask a question. The only liens that I am aware of that can be filed in this town relate to, like, money owed to the town. Okay, we lean the property. I don't know any separate committee that benefits from leaning somebody because they haven't either paid their bill or something. The only liens I can think of relate to taxes and things. Now, we can refuse to issue permits to people that owe money to the town under the part of the law that covers it. I don't, I don't, I don't even know if it's legal for any committee to collect money for liens and use it for their own benefit. Liens are usually something that goes through the town because of the legalities of the whole thing.
Lisa, that's a question for Jim.
I think Paul already researched it.
So, under the law that lets us lean the three that we do now, the Title Vives, the demolition liens.
Right, right.
Under that law, it says that any type of municipal, uh, charge or fee can be leaned, but each one that's gonna be leaned needs to be specifically approved by itself at town meeting.
So, Mr. Tax Collector, for the best of your knowledge, does anybody currently have, other than, within your authority as tax collector and, and that kind of thing, is anybody getting fees from liens other than the town of Dayton? Specifically the town, meaning it comes into.
Okay, I, I understand what, uh, what Nancy's getting at, she's saying, in other words, we should fine people and then collect the money for ourselves, because that might encourage us, uh, to fine more people.
Now, what I'm saying to you is, not even, whether or not you're gonna fine them or whatever, what I'm saying to you is if your intent is to, whether you impose fines, uh, let's just say you want to impose fines, it's a punishment for whatever they've done or not done. I think it's one thing to say to the voters, uh, the fines we collect, if you, if you're collecting them now, currently go into the general fund. It closes out the free cash. We're asking you to allow that money to be put into special account, you've already got a special account, cause you get the rollback taxes. All right?
Yeah.
To have that money put into the Conservation Commission account to be used for. Now, we know that the rollback taxes you use to buy other land or that kind of stuff. I think if you say to them, and you put the word lean in there, I think you're gonna kill any attempt or any hope of doing anything. The word lean comes across as a really strict legal, uh, penalty, pick a word. Um, if Paul leans a property, it could, non-payment of taxes, or, um, we had a development that owed us over forty-three thousand dollars that was over three years' worth of taxes and stuff. That had been leaned, but we did collect it, by the way. But what I'm saying to you, the word lean implies something different than getting fined. If you get fined, you did something wrong, you broke the law, or whatever. So the voters might go for that, but if you're gonna lean property or lean somebody because they violated your bylaw, I think it's a can of worms. I think it's gonna be very difficult.
By, by leaning it under this chapter, it, what that means is it's taking the money that was owed at the end of the previous fiscal year and adding it to the third and fourth quarter of the tax bill. Because that's the issue we're running into right now, is that if you have somebody who has fines and refuses to pay them, then, then, then what, what happens? They just kind of float out there and eat there, and you could take civil action against them. You could deny certain licenses or permits, but if they don't necessarily need those licenses or permits, they don't, they might not care. They don't have any, any real reason to, to pay their firm. And so, that was what we were looking to cure with this, is that if we could add them under the tax bill, then it requires them to pay it.
Well, you can add a fine to a tax bill.
Right.
To collect it there. I'm, I'm telling, what I'm saying to you is the word, the term lean.
It's a dirty word.
Has legal implications that if anybody hears it, they're not gonna think of it as a fine. Or they violated the bylaw and they got fined. So what I'm saying to you is, uh, before I use that word, I would, I would strongly get some kind of advice, legal advice or something.
Yeah, we can, we can call MACC and get some legal advice.
And that's fine, cause that is exactly what we do with those three now, the septic charges, the sewer, and the, um, and the demolition. Is those are leaned now, is the.
And that money closes out to estimated receipts and then free cash, or, or something like that? Oh, well sewer might get something out of it. Yeah, they're separate, yeah.
So they do have an own tax fund, that that would go to. So you're, you're totally right, that would be unique for those funds to go into a revolving fund.
All right, and the other thing you've got to remember, rollback taxes, the town approved that many years ago, okay? And you have been getting income from solar farms, those have probably been the big ones, okay, of, of recent history. Um, they're gonna be aware of that, all right? And that is unique, because if you remember, there was a time when the Finance Committee wanted that money.
That was a whole bill. And actually, when I came back, I said, we must have a lot of money, and then it was discovered that that money was not in our accounts, and we had to transfer it, so hopefully, hopefully.
I, I have no idea what your balance is, all I know is that the biggest expense that I'm aware of came out of it was the hundred and fifty thousand that we needed to buy Council Oak two. But I also remember saying, when I asked if you would do that, I also remember saying, you're gonna get the rollback taxes from, and I told you what the solar farms were.
Yeah.
Okay, so all I'm saying to you, that's something else you've got to keep in mind, because the rollback taxes that go into your account, that doesn't close out like those other revolving accounts do. So, it's like you're all competing for money. No one can touch that, that rollback tax money, that's secure because of the town meeting vote. Everyone that has revolving accounts every year has to ask to have them renewed, replenished up to whatever the cap is. So you need to keep that in mind too, and, and keep in mind how much, I have no idea what's in your account, but you should also keep that in mind too. I know lately, uh, I should say as, as of late, you've been asked to pay legal expenses and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that's next on our agenda.
From, uh, that account. I, I just wonder if there's any way that you can, um, like, like the town is doing with Weston and Sampson, the work they do, we aren't paying for. We get that money upfront who, from whoever's project it is we want looked at. So I don't know if that's any way that you could also do that. Um, that wouldn't require a bylaw, if you need services for something. Obviously, if someone's taking legal aga- against you, they're taking action against the town. That's not the same thing, but if you, like you do with your, you've got fifty-three Gs, right, consultants? So, um, if those expenses could be kind of moved over to that, and your conservation money would be more protected. And less expended on stuff that's not, uh, land acquisition or wetlands, whatever you're gonna do with it.
Right. And, and the reason I referred to it, to it as lean is to, just, the, the first paragraph of the section of the law that left us add that money to the tax bill. Says, "Any city or town may impose a lien on real property located within the city or town for any local charge or fee that has not been paid by the due date. Said lien shall be known as a municipal charges lien, provided that a separate vote at a town meeting by a city or town council is taken for each type of charge or fee." Like, that's what we did at City Hall, we got a long time.
Right.
And, uh, so it is a, a municipal lien. It's not quite the same as tax title, it's not the best thing.
Right, right.
It's not the best thing in town building in the town, but that's what it has to be, it has to be considered a, a lien that would be added onto the third and fourth quarter.
If you were to lean someone's, someone, some property, whatever, issue a lien against them, in order for whatever they want to happen, they have to pay the lien? Or if you have a municipal lien and you put it on their tax bill, because they didn't pay their, um, some kind of license or permit fee, if they pay the license or permit, permit fee, does the lien go away?
It would become part of the tax bill at that point, so it, it would just be on, on their tax bill.
In addition to what they owe for the permit or whatever it is they haven't paid?
If it was like, do you mean like if a municipal charge that was, that was unpaid got leaned under the tax bill?
Yeah.
So no, they, they wouldn't have to pay it twice, it would just, that money would be moved from being outstanding in one place to being part of their real estate.
So they would pay whatever the charge was that they haven't paid yet, the late, with the late pay? Where does the lien go, it's just removed?
Well, it's, it's, it's part of their tax bill, so it's, it's an unperfected lien, so it's not recorded.
Oh, so it's not really a lien then?
Ri- right, it's, it's.
It's not, so we should.
So that's why, that's, this is why I'm saying this gets.
Why we should wipe out the word lien.
This gets.
Well, we can't, because legally that's what it is, is your, your, a charge that's part of your tax bill is considered a lien. It's not a perfected lien, it becomes a perfected lien if it gets recorded in tax title and then gets recorded as a real estate.
Okay, the source of the income you're talking about is fines, is that correct?
Yep.
So, there should be a way, if you're going to, and maybe, the library has the, the copying fee and the, what is it, lost books or whatever, whatever. They got a couple of them. So, when money is received for, for those services, reasons, whatever, they go into those accounts and they can use them to buy books or whatever it says, okay? That's their source of income for those accounts. The source of the income for the account you're talking about is a fine or fines.
Right, and our, our logic for that is that where we have somebody's got a bad violation, where we have to find them, usually by the time we get there, Lisa's probably put twenty, thirty, fifty, a hundred hours worth of work in like trying to track this person back.
Right, right.
Trying to fix the situation. And so the reason that we wanted to do that is so that if she does have to take enforcement action that's gonna result in extra expenses, certified mailing, overtime, whatever the case may be.
Yeah.
That the town shouldn't be the one permanently paying for that, really, it should be the person who's caught, you know, it should be the person who's not committing violations, who's not committing crimes.
Yeah.
Who's responsible for paying the taxes that pay for her to do that.
So, is the statute, the statute that you quoted, is it specific to conservation commissions?
No, it's, it's, it's literally any, any unpaid municipal charge can be leaned to a tax bill if the town meeting authorizes it to. Just Dayton in the past has only ever authorized demolition, type of fines, and sewer liens. But in theory, they could, you know, they sort of authorized unpaid dog licenses.
Mm-hmm.
And if they did, and that got approved at town meeting, at the end of the fiscal year, the town clerk would provide us, and we'd go to the assessors and, and we would get committed to the taxes. And then at that point, when we do the actual billing for the third and fourth quarter, that would become added into our tax accounting software as a line item. And so on the tax bill, when you get it, you would see, you know, real estate, CPA, electric district, water district, and dog licensing.
Yeah, yeah. And, past history, I know, I think the last one that got passed was the, didn't the police department have one at the annual town meeting, some kind of an account set up?
Yes, an revolving fund for, for the community engagement.
I forgot what it was for, yeah.
Oh, my, oh, I, you know what I think it was for, was, um, for maintenance of the detail cruisers. I believe that's what it was.
Yeah, but what's the source of income?
Contractors. Probably contractors.
I think, I'm just trying to.
Was it licenses?
It might have been licenses.
Was it LTCs? That, that, what they're spending it on is one thing, the question I have is what's the source of the income, okay? I know something passed at the town meeting, not sure what. The other thing you've got to look at, that you're gonna be up against is FY twenty-six is supposed to be extremely difficult. Forget those bond issues we got out there right now, just the regular, um, the, the total amount of money we're gonna need to provide the regular services in the town. So you're gonna have competition for that. All of the money not to put in those specific accounts is used to help fund town operations, so, so you need to be aware of that. I mean, you obviously know, I'm telling you, there will be competition for every penny that's out there this coming year. Uh, so, but anyhow, yeah, yeah, if, I understand what you're saying in the law, all I'm saying is, uh, lean, as you, in this discussion, it muddies the water. And it's, uh, to me, if somebody says, your property's gonna be leaned, it's like, oh, if you say, you're gonna be fined because you, whatever you did. That's a different story.
If we were to explain it as adds a munis- adds a conservation fine to the tax bill, adds, uh, conservation fines that were outstanding as of when the actuals go out.
Yeah.
Add that to the tax bill, I, I totally agree, that's a lot more palatable to people than to hear that your property will be leaned. It's just, you know, technically, that's, that's what it's considered, it's just not recorded at the registry deeds.
Uh-huh.
Unless it became part of a tax title later, because all taxes is, you know, our, our, our houses are leaned every year.
Exactly.
Right, cause every tax bill you get is, is a lien.
Right.
Even if it doesn't get recorded at the registry, it's still considered a lien for three and a half years as a date that it.
Right, right. And in the case of that, you truly have, you, the town truly has an asset that you're leaning against, as if, as opposed to, we're gonna fine you, and somebody says, who cares, I'm not paying it.
Exactly.
You know, so.
Exactly the place we're in right now, so we're just trying to give it a little more teeth, and then when the money does come in, to try to segregate it into a fund where we can use it to defray the expenses that we take on as a result of going through all the rigmarole that results in issuing the fines from dealing with the violations in the first place. So that's like, that's the needle we're, we're trying for.
Yeah, you know, I understand what you're saying, yeah, as I say that one word.
I, I know, I know, it's scary.
Okay, um, I've, I, so we're gonna look for wording on that. Now, and I hear, I got two things that I just wrote down here. Enforcement action, if we have to go out and give an enforcement notice, usually we tell someone to come up with a plan, tell them that they, they made an error, they gotta fix it, and if they comply, there's no enforcement action. But if we have to give out an enforcement action, send them an enforcement notice, uh, I think we should have a, a, a fee with that. Enforcement action, just a thought.
Ah.
Okay, uh, enforcement action, one hundred dollars, so that when they do apply, uh, and then, that does not subject them to, um, um, they could still be fined after that.
Only a hundred?
I, I'm, I do that, I don't know. That, that, that's the action, you going out, you telling us what happened, you telling us what, what.
Usually by then, like Paul's right, it's been, usually.
Then they, then they have to get someone.
Twenty hours of my time has already been spent on this, you know?
Okay.
I mean, if you put that into consulting terms, you're talking like twenty hours?
I just spent three thousand bucks.
At that rate, right?
All right.
I mean, you know?
I, I know, okay, now, here's something, we get all these fees that we're charging. Those little packets, one dollar a piece, where does that money go?
Into a fund.
Okay, can we say fees collected will go?
It's an account.
Okay, okay, because we are going to get fees from the amended order of conditions, from the order of conditions, from the application for site visits, where are those fees gonna go?
Well, that would be that ultimately if we, if we're successful, that's, they would go into the revolving fund.
Okay, now would that be a separate, that would be a separate warrant out of?
Yeah, that would be.
That is the. That is the separate warrant article.
I believe that would be part of that separate warrant article, 'cause I think, I could be wrong, and I'll double check. And, um, but I believe that the revolving funds and if...Nancy, if you know, please let me know, I think that the revolving funds that we vote on annually at town meeting do say what those fee sources are. 'Cause I'm just...I'm thinking about the library one where I think it says like copies, like book files, things like that.
Damn, you show us books, we all copy and other. The other thing you need to put in there is, what's your cap? You will be capped at whatever it is.
Right, is it capped at five thousand dollars or something like that?
Anything over than above the cap closes out to estimated receipts free cash. And it ends every year, whether you spend a dime or not, every year, it starts up again. It doesn't accumulate.
Right, and that...I think that would be fine, 'cause we're just be looking to defray the expenses that were taken on during the year.
The thing is, with your committee, and quite frankly, if we're Stone Water was talking about this, I'd be saying, "Forget it," because the public is going to say, "You have a budget. If you need money, put more money in the budget." What you're attempting to do is supplement your budget up to whatever my grant would give me capped at, okay? So, and as I say, um, the more committees that attend this...
Then maybe we can buy bug spray and stuff like that for me. I mean, honestly, that's what we're up against.
I go back to what I said to you.
Yeah. We try, we put it in the budget and we get...
You have a budget.
We got...
Oh, I can tell you, you're not the only department in town that buys insecticide repellent stuff, because the guys that work outside all stumble on and are eating the bugs. It's part of the supplies for the operation of that...
They also get a stipend, which I don't get, a clothing stipend. I'm ripping my clothes...
Okay, but we...we can vote that out. If we put this money into a...that...
Then maybe you can...yeah.
We can...we would do this. We would, uh, uh, buy you, uh...
A new tie hat.
Special clothing. And why don't we could do that too?
I think we all need sun hats, to be honest with you.
But not a red hat?
I would feel much better if we all had sun hats. If Dave goes on another site visit with me without sun hat and sunscreen, I'm not inviting him anymore. Just saying.
Um, okay. All right, I think we know where we're heading on. Uh, we're gonna have three articles on the warrant. We have to...I think the easiest one to word is gonna be for the bylaw. The other two are gonna be a little bit more tricky to word to make them acceptable.
Yeah, when is the town...
Agreed, but the good thing about that is that the other two, um...Nancy, can't benefit from it, correct, please? Is that the other two that we're talking about are not, um, bylaw changes. Right, we only have one bylaw change that'll require a public hearing.
Yeah.
And so, depending on when the documentations are gonna go out for the warrants and everything needs to be finalized and...
Yeah.
The placeholders have to be completely buttoned up, um, we may potentially have one more meeting. No, I'm not sure when the selectmen are gonna seal the door.
Well, if we have to have a special meeting, we can have it in, uh, maybe the first week of October.
We gotta come up with a date, yeah. Do you guys wanna come up with a date now or...the earlier, the better, right?
Yeah, we could do like a save the date if it's necessary and we don't necessarily have to have it.
Um, let's see, October, I don't know, uh, what would we do?
I've got a meeting at four that will be done by five on October 3rd. That's a Thursday, that's...
What date is that? What day?
Thursday.
Two weeks.
Thursday, okay.
I say we do it.
October 3rd.
Oh, on a Thursday, it'll be...
Okay, but that's not a definite yet, that's...
Well, I just need to...so, every Thursday, I bowl on a week, so...
Can't mess with that.
No, it's fine.
So, that would have to be posted in the newspaper?
I have to be out of here by six fifteen.
Uh, we could start the meeting, I don't know, five o'clock on...I don't know on... Would that be, Jack, on Thursday, five o'clock? Five o'clock?
Discuss.
Okay, and that's, um, only if needed.
I'm missing tonight, but I pre-bowled one seventy-one game.
That's only if needed.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you have to let cable know ahead of time, we may run out of resources either by...
Okay.
Just so you know, 'cause we all work with time drops.
The...is that...is it a must that it be recorded?
I'm not sure, I can't answer that.
Okay.
All right, so, we'll be...
Five thirty or something, we could see how that would work.
Five thirty, yeah.
Tentative if we need to, pending, you know...
I don't think...I really don't think that it's going to be...anyone's even gonna show up.
Five thirty might work, uh, yeah, it'll open at six, if he had to call that yesterday.
It would be a half hour meet. I don't expect it to be long.
No, I wouldn't expect it to be long.
Yeah, no, I agree.
We just hashed everything out. Um...
But you'd have to leave by six fifteen?
Well, I'd like to. Six fifteen, six thirty, I could be a few minutes late.
You can seven-ten split.
Okay, all right, all right, okay. So, we have a tentative date. We have a tentative date, so our regular date is gonna be October nineteen, no, October seventeen.
October seventeenth.
Seventeen, okay. And this is a tentative date, October 3rd. And that'll be posted upstairs and will be posted in the newspaper.
Right, so I have to figure out from chair how many days in advance it has to go in?
I think it's five days, so...
Five business?
So, in a week, so maybe by next Thursday?
I'll find out.
You have to have the warrant article wording complete on that hearing night.
Yes.
You can't make changes after the hearing, 'cause you'll have to schedule another one.
Okay, but that would be...that would be only the bylaw. And we get that...we get that essentially done now. That is...that is ninety-nine percent done.
Yeah, we're talking about if we need to revisit the other two, but the revolving fund and if we have to tweak that.
I'm halfway talking about the bylaw, not the...
Yeah, okay, so I...I think we're all set. That'd be bylaw only, uh, that we would do that. Uh, we would, uh, pay for it out of our account. Uh, I don't know which one we have there, but we got a couple of them, whether it's the rollback account, uh, we could do that. Okay, um, shall we move on? I think we have one more item on the agenda.
Yeah, one more item. So, um, for whatever reason, I don't have the sheet that shows the amount, exact amount, but it's somewhere around ten thousand seven hundred, I think, left.
In what?
In the legal budget.
In the legal.
That's the one from the annual town meeting?
Yeah, so, um...
I...I believe that we can also use the rollback on that.
If necessary.
If necessary, yes.
I just wanted to update...
Okay, was that the review, discuss that legal fee budget? Okay.
Yeah, so, I don't know, we're not really at a point, maybe when it gets down to like five thousand...
But a lot of this too is actually...what we're dealing with now is more planning board than us. We just...we just had that meeting with...
That's executive session.
What?
That'd be an executive session matter.
Yeah, we don't...we're not talking about that.
We can't discuss specifics.
Okay, all right.
Um, so anyways, so, I think when it gets down to be like five thousand or will be... or seven thousand, maybe next month, it'll be...
I'm gonna...I'm gonna...that meeting that we had with Matt, no, but that wasn't executive.
No, to discuss it here with the commission would have to be executive.
No, we weren't here.
No, I'm telling you, that was you and me and Matt, that's different.
Okay.
What Paul's saying is, if the commission's gonna discuss legal maz, we have to go into executive.
Okay, all right, okay, I got you, okay.
Okay.
One last thing. So, are you feeling like we might, that the town's legal budget might...or the amount approved might be inadequate? Because something we could do could be to put in a placeholder to ask for more at the special. If the selectmen disagree or, you know, we determine that it's not appropriate, we could withdraw it.
Because we have rollback, that's the problem.
Right, so we...
But the rollback's being used, as you know, like depleted.
I know.
We could...we could have a conversation and, uh, if...we could always...Nancy, we could always withdraw a warrant article request.
Sorry, anything?
If we submitted a warrant article request to the selectmen for the special and then decided not to pursue it before they...
Before they print the warrant, you can tell them, "Forget it." If it makes the warrant and you go to town meeting, you can just say, "We have no motion on this."
Okay, all right, so...
Are...are tabled.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks. Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you be willing to entertain a motion for another warrant article to increase our legal budget for special town meeting?
Uh, that's not the way to go.
I don't...
You need to make a request of, uh, the, uh...you need to get the word...it won't be a special article, you'll be...you'll be...I would think you're gonna be asking for a transfer, uh, funds, but this is something that you might wanna run by the finance committee chairman and just say, "Looks like we're gonna run out of money or run very short on legal." Um, see, a separate warrant article is not the same as, in effect, amending your budget. What you're gonna ask for is you want more money in the budget if you need it.
Right.
See, a warrant article, once it's passed, it doesn't go away until it's voted to go away and you spend everything in it.
Oh, that's...that's true, so we'd be better off talking to FinCom and getting...seeing if we can negotiate a transfer if we need one.
So, it's...you need to get the word out that, um, you can put something right into the board, selectmen, copy to FinCom and the TA and say, "We're concerned about our legal budget and we would like...we request an increase of X," um, and see where it goes from there.
That's a much better idea than...
Yeah, you don't want a warrant out.
Thank you.
The last time I met with FinCom, alls they kept on was throwing out our rollback money. And what we have to do is, one, see how much money is in that account, okay? And how much is set aside for the case at Strawberry Fields, uh, because we got probably a hundred thousand dollars going out for that.
We should discuss that in executive session.
Yeah, we're not talking about it right now.
Well, okay, but we gotta see how much money we are gonna have after we make payment there. And I think we're making payment as we go along.
If Lisa reminds me on Monday is, you know, I'll be able to pull the balance of the fund, but it's not difficult for me to...
Okay, all right.
Okay. The balance of the legal fund and the balance of the rollback fund?
Yeah.
But then we would know how much we would have. We could...if we...if assuming we have money for legal fees, we would know how much we have there, uh, to go from one account, because that's, uh, that's what is included in there. The big thing is our land purchases.
Right, so we wanna make sure that we spend down that special...that annual town meeting article first...
Yeah.
Before we touch the rollbacks. We wanna keep that in there as far as we can.
Yeah, and, uh, I don't know, at this point in time, you know, we don't have offers on land, so we'll...we'll see how that goes. Okay, so, um, three...three things for the special town meeting. Um, you're gonna take care of two of them, we'll look into it.
Yeah.
You're gonna talk...we're gonna talk to Jim on the that and while, and then you can let me know, um, uh...
Okay.
When I come back. Uh, I'll be back next Friday.
Okay.
You should also submit your written request for a budget increase with those other things you're gonna submit, all right? Because even though it's not per se a separate warrant article, you're asking them to act on this if they put it on there at the town meeting. So, if the warrant closes and you say, "Oh, by the way, we forgot to tell you, we need an increase in our legal budget," they can say, "You're too late." So, you need to get the request in for a potential increase in your budget to cover legal expenses.
Jim digits, that should come from you.
All I'm saying is, get it in by the deadline for this other thing. As the selectmen...
The deadline's Monday.
What is things coming out of the board after you've thought it's done?
Right.
Um...
Um, that has to come through me, you said, and that's Monday.
Usually, it comes from the chairman.
It should be the chairman.
Tell Bev you can't go.
You can, um, uh, just write out something, she can draw the line.
Okay, well, how about if I...if I vote...we vote now to have Paul act in my place?
I don't...
I don't know.
I don't know.
Um, but I...I would like to see how much we have in the rollback, because if we have sufficient, we wouldn't need legal, extra legal.
We don't know what sufficient is, I mean, it all depends...
Oh, I...oh, I know.
If we have the ability to get more legal, it would be good though, because legal can only be spent on legal, or rollback could be spent on legal, or land purchases or more things.
Well, that's what it's intended for, land purchase.
I'd rather preserve the more versatile money and then just see if we could...
Right, and if you recall, we asked for more and then we go...
Right, and that was when I spoke with the former town administrator, I had initially intended to ask for thirty, and he said to ask for fifteen now and then fifteen at the special. It was something that he originally brought up, but...
Okay, uh, who...who would you address at this Monday meeting?
Um, I would say...
The Monday meeting?
You mean, the...
The Monday...the Monday deadline, the Monday...
The Monday deadline? Uh, well, the selectmen and town administrator, all of them.
Okay, town administrator. I could call from the bus ride.
I'm on my way to Atlantic City, we need more money.
Okay, uh, are we all set to adjourn or...
Should we do...do we have...does Nancy have a Republican put?
I think we've had it.
My only question is, I didn't realize you started at six, and I'm...what I came for was, what happened to Grasshopper? Are they all done now?
No.
We've heard...we haven't heard a blessed thing from them.
Yeah, table to a date uncertain. They'll have to re-notify the butters when they do, uh...
And they...yes, they have to re-notify everybody.
They were only before us for the additional cutting. They didn't come back to us for the basins, we didn't require that.
So, the approvals that were granted by Planning and Stone Water were contingent on ours was first and was contingent on what happened with Planning. Planning told me last night, "We're all set," and it's contingent on what Conservation does. If you have not given this thing the approval, they can't start digging next week and that's with the planning.
So, we told them it was...I told them it was...it would not require, um, an amended NOI. I told them they could capture it in the as-built, because we all want the thing to function.
Did you close the hearing? Did you close the hearing? You said yesterday.
No, this is, this is, they applied for the recutting of more trees, this was.
That's all they're before us for right now.
Stormwater meeting, you stated you expected the hearing to be closed.
For what?
You made the statement, Ahmed was standing at the podium.
I expected that Brooks Street was going to be co, Brooks.
He was the standing at the podium. It's the only project he's there for.
No, he didn't come before us for that. That's not what I was talking about.
So what I'm saying to you is, the impression that I had was, I came tonight to find out, are you all set with Grasshopper?
Grass.
And Brooks Street Solar is cleared to proceed with excavation. That's my new question.
Wes didn't.
The honor before us now is the cutting of more trees. And we have not, and, and we are.
She's not talking about the cutting of trees. She's talking about the basins.
I'm talking about.
But I'm saying, we're done with that.
Where, we.
So, so I think the answer to Nancy's question is yes, right? They're otherwise all set. It's by storm, stormwater and.
I had told Nick.
The only issue that they have on us is that they want to cut additional trees that we didn't, that we didn't allow them from the first time.
Because the budding neighbor also brought up the whether or not anything would be disturbed. And it was, and initially you had said, there would be no disturbance in wetland areas, so that meant they could go ahead with their thing, all right?
Yeah, no additional work in wetland areas. Yeah.
The only thing that was confusing is the statement you made yesterday when we were talking about the project moving ahead. Moving ahead meaning, they can go down and start next week excavating that big basin that.
They're fixing it.
And install the new system in the bottom. And before it's covered, Weston and Sampson has to be on site. They'll probably be there watching some of this. But before they bury that new system, it's got to be inspected again. And then when it's put in place and everything's back, it's got to be inspected again. And then they got to pray for rain or water in it, so that it can be tested. So the only thing I need to know is, there is nothing on your agenda.
No.
Relative to Grasshopper that would prevent them from starting their construction.
No, and, and what I was speaking with Ahmed about was specifically the SWIP inspections. I need to stop seeing them again per hour, original order.
That wasn't part of my concern, because he said that they would do it.
Yeah.
There was the big discussion about delays and all that. Not what I'm concerned about.
Okay.
Only because when I went, I went to planning and they said, if everything's okay with Ponco, I said, then it's a go. I'll go to them, you can find out what happens. So that's the one.
On that portion, yes, it's okay.
I didn't require them to come back before the commission for the basins, because I figured West, between Weston and Sampson and level design at the end, when they come for their as-built, that's when they can come and say, hey, this wasn't designed, this, this was designed differently than the way it was built, and this is why. So they captured in the as-built and the certificate of compliance. You guys don't need to.
No.
Because they're not, they're not going outside the footprint of the base.
No, I, 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 I follow you completely.
Okay, good.
It's only their new filing with us that, that's gone sour. The, the past is, is ready to go.
Well, it's been ready to go.
Nancy was asking about.
Everything is, it's, it's a go.
I mean, I, I guess the only thing I would be concerned about, and maybe I should ask Nick, is have they, do they have an expi, do they need to extend their order? But I'll talk.
That they're going to cut the, the trees since they get permission?
They're not cut, they're not cutting the trees that they asked to cut in our buffer zone. They only, they revised it all, so with the planning board, so it's only outside, the work outside the buffer zone.
And since they haven't come back to you, it's not absolutely positive they're going to do it anyhow. So if they aren't going to do it.
They keep.
They should notify you, we're not going to do it.
Right, but we have to leave it on our agenda until.
I understand that. I understand that. Okay.
Alright, I, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.